Six thirty and the Woodland Park Planning Commission meeting for January twenty sixth is now in session. Take call please.
We aren't prepared with no list, so we're just going to start at the end and work down the line. Christian Nielsen.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
Chairman Harsfield.
Here.
Lee Brown.
Here.
Carol Harvey.
Here.
And Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Please join me. The revisions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have one item on the agenda, and that's a work session to review the the code review project for land use code. So Karen, do we have a presentation to get started?
Yeah, I'll get started. Also in attendance, we have Valerie Lundie from the Board of Adjustment and then Councilmember Catherine Nakai. So it's always nice to have some of our colleagues join us for this. Online in Zoom land, oh, it looks like Nina's joining us this evening. And then our consultant Jen Garner is out there. So by way of what we're going to do work session wise, Jen and I talked a little bit about clearly needed to dive into a little bit the nuances of Conveo, the tool that we had rolled out in hopes of making this more productive and useful and able to focus our conversations when we get into a meeting together. Because it's real easy to see where people, you know, had issues, comments or concerns. But it sounds like a number of you ran into a couple of different issues here and there along the way. So I know she's working on trying to solve some of those things in the backend, but still probably good to just be able to answer questions and and you can then see what she sees and and hopefully that'll help. And then we'll dive into the definitions in chapter seven and and go through those. And again, primarily, we've been focusing on restructuring our existing regulations. There are some glaring holes of things that need to be defined or terminology that has changed as the world has changed. I think one of those terms that she and I were discussing yesterday was micro mobility. I can't remember what it was exactly. And it's like, oh, okay. So there are things we definitely need to add, a couple of things that need to be updated for legal compliance with state statute. So anyhow, we'll we'll be working through all of that. So with that, we should probably turn this over to Jen so she can join us and lead on.
Hello.
I'm sorry. And this is CJ's first night kind of driving the bus back there in the AV booth. So we just lots of grace and patience as he picks hits buttons until it does what we want.
So Dave didn't hit the balcony use. I was like.
Yeah, no. I'm sure he'd appreciate. Okay.
It looks like I'm just a giant head on your screen. Um, so yeah, I I wanted to say, I know there's been a couple little issues with Conveo and I am working with actually the provide the supplier of Conveo to try to figure out the best way to do this. So physically, when we use Conveo, we have it open so everyone can see everyone else's comments in a little bit more of a public forum. And with with you all, what we're what we tried to do with this one was not allow that to so we weren't breaking any sunshine sunshine laws. By way of doing that, and I I went in 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 incognito mode to see what you guys were seeing, and I had the same problem. I would place a comment. I would get out of the window, get back in, and my comment didn't appear to me, but it is on the backside. And for those of you who have submitted comments, I I sent you your comments earlier today, so you could see what you you could see that I'm seeing that you have put them in there. That said, I pulled that report yesterday afternoon and a few additional comments came in today. So if you don't see a couple of your comments, I think there was an additional twenty or something comments. I can pull a new report this evening and send that out if you guys want to have that for your record. But I am working on the backend. There's just a a number of settings that we can do on the backend to hide comments from folks. Or just allow you to see only a certain portion of the comments and and the password protection might be causing the problem. So I'm going to try some different functions and I probably will use Karen as the guinea pig and we'll figure out a way to get this working for the rest of the chapters. They'll still be loaded up there. All your comments will still be there. I still have all of them, but we'll just try some different ways so that we can make it work a little smoother the next time.
Is there.
Were there any? Oh, go ahead. I was gonna ask if there were any comments or any questions.
Yep, jump the gun. Sorry. Is there any way at all that we can maintain those comments for we can see them as as we're working through this? Because as we get into different sections, we might want to go back and refer to, you know, a definition and how that turned out.
Especially if we're changing it and we need to make sure it stays.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I'm I'm working on that. And that's what my hope is, is that I can get it to a place where maybe if you uh, if you register, and that's a question I have for those of you who did get in, did did any of you register as a user? And then re log in, I think a couple of you might have, like Larry and Carol might have.
I tried both ways because I wasn't happy without without doing so. Didn't seem to help.
Okay, that was what I was assuming is that a couple of you did register and still didn't have have luck with that. So yeah, we're working on it. And like I said, we will get something resolved in in some fashion, even even if I have to give each of you your own conveyo link, which is fine by me, and then you can just get in and make your comments and and see all of your comments. That's my that's my last last option if I can't get the other options to work, but I know that one would work. So we'll figure this out.
Other questions? More experiences so far?
Okay, you whined to me considerably more at the last meeting. You can't cut and paste. You can't copy. What was the other list?
They kind of already said it.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure Jen could hear it too. I did relay it.
That's what she relayed.
Yeah, she did relay all that. And that is one of the one of the things with Conveo that doesn't work or that you can't cut cut and paste or copy things in. So as far as I know, and that's that's why I have a call in to Conveo itself to find out if there are functions that I'm just not aware of in the program that might help us. Maybe there's a different way I can set up the documents so that we can do different things with it. There's other options. I mean, we could always go with well, there's there's PDF ver- you know, there's ways to just send out a PDF in a in a format that you guys can comment on. There's Google Docs, things like that. The issue with those is again, being able to see each other's comments, I know was a concern that we didn't want to allow that until we were in the public forum. So maybe maybe Karen and I need to talk a little bit more about that as well.
And then out of curiosity, did anybody try using like the Microsoft Snip tool to take like a screenshot of something and then and add that into a a comment bubble? I don't know if.
But it does it does paste. It just wouldn't cut from the document. You can, for instance, I have open at the same time the municipal code, which has a lot of the same wording. So I I I copy it from there and then paste it into the edit com edit box, which saves a little bit of typing because it's, you know, typing plus there's no edit. There's no auto correct on the type, obviously. So so that if there's if there's a longer paragraph that you want to do something with, that helps save a few steps.
Okay.
So are you kind of like snippet?
Yeah, a little snippet. Yeah, where it's basically a very localized screenshot.
But you can't edit that at all.
No, but you can at least, you know, rather than retype something, you put something in by way of illustration.
Yeah.
My sense is it's something Larry said does, and we can reconsider this at the end of the meeting, but when a meeting's finished, Jen's going to have sort of a collection of comments which reflects some level of consensus. Any of it can be changed later and such. But I think it would be quite important if shortly after that meeting, those those be put into a document that be distributed to us as a as a document that says now, this this is the revised chapter seven. We understand it'll go further revised.
With all of our.
Reflecting our discussions, some of our comments will get in, some won't. Other ones will think of new thoughts in the meeting.
Oh, I I agree. Are we able to come to a consensus in a work session on what the next version of definitions will be like?
That's largely what we're we're doing. I mean, you saw that with the first chapter we went through, that there was a memo with notes that came out in terms of what we we heard around consensus. And so the the goal is to get through this first draft of the document and then we'll come back with revised version two with everything incorporated. But meanwhile, yes, feedback with regard to what we heard in the work session and what's being massaged that's going into version two.
Jen can perhaps come up with some kind of coding to indicate a different color or something else that here's a controversial section or I mean, whatever, whatever is the best way to communicate with us. What we sort of agreed upon so that we can use it as a baseline as we're looking at other chapters.
Yeah, and I'll I'll tell you guys, I'm I took all the comments off the Conveo and I've exported them as of about ten minutes ago, exported them into an Excel spreadsheet. And I'll take notes in a separate column this evening on those comments. And then I can insert any additional comments that we have all in that spreadsheet, and that might be the best way moving forward to track kind of what what we've been talking about, if that helps.
It will, but my question was procedurally, can we agree to changes tonight and have them incorporated in a new version?
That's basically what we're doing is just you're not going to see that new version for a while.
Okay.
Yeah, but no, that's that's what the work session is because yeah, we do value that feedback. You know, and that's that's what does go in there in terms of just all kinds of things, including missing commas that you guys have have flagged and such. So.
One just quick technical question.
Yes, sir.
The spreadsheet I had has my name as username, bubble number such and such, then the comment. There was a separate document sent a PDF of the with bubbles on it, but the numbers in the bubbles don't match the cross references.
Oh, I was hoping you wouldn't notice.
Okay, Jen, Jen, have you met this planning commission before? Of course they noticed.
I sent all that off. Like I said, I pulled the Excel report yesterday, and then I pulled the report with all the bubbles today. In my foggy mind, I guess you could call it, I didn't check the two until right before this meeting, when I was looking through things and I noticed the same thing. And I know exactly what happened is those new comments came in, but they weren't captured in the Excel spreadsheet. So I do have a new report that matches that that I can send you guys after this meeting. And it is hard, even even though even with that, because some of the bubbles are on top of each other and they're hard to see. I can go in on the backend and see where those bubbles actually are. I can't move them.
I have confirmed that one of my bubbles is right. One? Well, I haven't checked them all, but.
I'd also like to recommend that, you know, because there are bugs in the system still that we don't have another work session until we can iron all those things out. Because that I have one, two, three documents here that I would have to reference every time we go through each one, see if I said anything about it. And it's I like to see those things taken care of before we move on. I know, I know. I don't know if we're under a timeframe here, but I I'd rather get it right than rush through it. If if Jen, a few days after our meeting, sent the the updated version of of chapter seven reflecting the comments, some consensus, we're a minute, a lot of places have consensus. Doesn't that get it? We now you can now put away all the documents except that. I hope so, yes. All right. So that doesn't mean we have to delay anything. It's two weeks, at least between our meetings. That's should be plenty of time for Jen in the first few days, the early portion of that. But I heard Karen say just a few minutes ago, you won't see the revisions until like until we go all the way through. I'd like to see the revisions for at least chapter seven. Yeah.
And this is where I'm tired. The Board of Adjustment took it out of us Tuesday night. We were here. So the brain's not quite as quick and sharp. Let's let's just get through tonight and see what this looks like. And I I hear what you're saying, Larry, because we do recognize that the definitions are key, which is why we're doing this on the the front end and they show up throughout the document. And that there's going to be a little bit of kind of back and forth between certain certain things. But let me let me revisit this with Jen because we didn't want to end up with like not ever getting past chapter one, because all we do is keep editing chapter one. So that's why we were really focused on how to let's get through at least one broad sweep of the document upfront to take care of the big stuff. You know, but but I I hear what you're saying, that the definitions, because of how they weave through the rest of the document, we might need to get that a little more finessed. So.
That's going to set the foundation.
Yeah, I said that's which is why we're doing that so early in the process. So, well, I'm not telling you now, but I'm not firmly committing yet either. And we we will have, we will have another work session because, you know, we don't keep meeting on this. It it's so easy for this to slide and so many other things to take to to fill that space. So I'm keeping it on the calendar, the second meeting of your month, unless something goes horribly awry and current planning. This is what we need to be doing. So that's my firm director kind of moment.
Okay.
So you guys ready to dive into what Jen sees and see if this will help focus our conversation?
Yeah, let's try it.
You're up, Jen. And this to help you feel better. She has another colleague in the background that you can't see who's helping to take notes and stuff. So there's, she's got backup on her end.
I always have to have backup because I'm like Karen. I I have lots of night meetings and by this time in the week, my brain doesn't function properly. Karen, did you want to talk about any of the definitions that we talked about the other day? Or do you want to hit them when we get to them in alphabetical order? Because I have a list of them.
Um, let's dive in and like look at what convey what you see with Conveo and and yeah, we'll get to to some of those pretty quickly, but let's let's at least help them feel more comfortable with what.
Okay. That sounds good. Would you like, would you guys like me to share my screen and show you the craziness that's happening behind the scene here?
Yes, please.
Please.
Okay. Luckily, it'll be really big on your screen, so that that would help.
Well, most of my members came with their own personal device, so it's some also hopefully more available in front of them.
It's going to have to be a requirement to be on the planning mission. You have to have a computer. Yeah. Can you make that look larger?
Well, that's let's see here.
Or at least.
Um.
I'll never read.
Let me let me move this over.
And maybe a case of increasing the font size, Jen. I don't know if that's possible.
Is that a little better?
You make the the one on the right disappears. It's probably not an issue. Just say what what definition we're talking about. Let's make the left one fill the screen.
There we go.
Where you do that.
Probably don't even need to see that. And I'm starting to fill in as I go which which definition these are related to, so it helps with the the bubbles. And I'll continue to do that as we go. So the first, the very first comment was just delete all gender related pronouns, which we Karen double checked that with the city clerk and that was acceptable. So we're going to do that throughout all documents as we move forward. So that one seemed to be a pretty straightforward one.
It's mine. Oh, we have two, right?
So does everybody's location number correspond with everybody else's? Like, number one? I don't show that anywhere on my comments, but Carol does.
No, I I renamed myself. Number one, because my other sign in wasn't working.
Your your numbers correlate with your list and it's however she did them. Yeah, that's what I've been sitting here doing was saying, okay, one ninety six was number whatever, ten on mine or whatever. So and then that numerically in order. So be careful.
Okay. Um, yep. And then number two was capitalize the word dwelling. So this is in the administrative. Sometimes these bubbles seem to jump, I have to admit, because that doesn't seem like that to be. It's showing up way down here. Can you guys see the number two?
Yes. No.
An administrative official.
Where's number two? Right screen, bottom right corner.
Yeah, I I submitted that one only because that one was then later made into an acronym. So every time you have an acronym, you needed to capitalize the first time it was spelled out completely.
Okay.
Just administrative.
Yep, so. Um, and then same adjacent property owner, there was a test to reuse.
I had comments on acceler- accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, there's actually a few. Why don't we just go down there? So that's eighteen and nineteen.
And Lee, when you look at her, I should go back, Jen, real quick to your list on the left, the spreadsheet. Yeah, as accessory dwelling unit. But we were on adjacent property owner and accessory dwelling unit came after that on that list.
Yeah, it does. All right. So it's not alphabet. All right.
Yeah, so let's.
Okay, I I have an earlier one. Question for.
You know, yeah, let me let me just go definition by definition, term by term. I I was not, I was following a different format. It might it takes a little dumping around, but let's go ahead and do that. So accelerated erosion, these four comments all were Larry just saying, okay, so they there. There's no comments really on accelerated erosion from Conveo.
And then for what it's worth, this may bring the rest of you some confidence. Where Larry was being the uber A plus student is he was looking and referencing each of these terms and whether it came from the current zoning regulation definitions or the subdivision regulations or even mobile home that, you know, he was really cross referencing the the source. So.
So that's why you'll see some of these that just say, okay, or zone or sub. So we can skip past those because they're just kind of just cross referencing. So eighteen and nineteen and four were a three dwelling unit. Looks like four was if one of Larry's okay. And then eighteen and nineteen.
I did have.
We're also.
On that though.
Okay.
Well, you might have come back and it may be a different number. So.
Are we just going to go down the? I I think it's more useful, Jen, just to go down the list alphabetically.
That's that's what I'm trying to do now. Yes, yep. So is that three dwelling unit? Were there any other comments?
I have a comment prior to that. So this this is wording I was looking at an eighteen point oh, six point oh, one oh, the current current ordinance, which which begins the definitions, and it seems like you'd have this below chapter seven and before the first definition, a sentence that adjusted to the for the the UDC. Read for purposes of this of this unified development code, the following words and phrases shall the definition set out in this chapter. Maybe you can sort of infer it, but that it's not unusual to start at the beginning of definitions section saying these are the definitions that apply to the UDC.
I agree.
And that's the way that's just taking the wording from the existing one, but saying unified development code instead of instead of this title.
Perfect. Another thing that Karen and I talked about was some of the not necessarily defined terms, but some of the general in that same statement, some of some of the kind of general things like shall and may kind of pulling those right to the front in that statement. And also, we could pull some of the standard acronyms, you know, like HUD or BLM if that were in here, you know, some of those, and we could define them right at the front end as well.
It what what she and I talked about is what I would call terms or or construct of of usage of certain terms, you know, like I said, permissive versus mandatory shall and may. The other thing that I've had in other development codes, which is helpful, is a resource or reference when something is not defined here, where do you go? Because there are actually other publications out there of zoning terminology and uses as well as just basic English. You defer to, you know, Webster's or a traditional dictionary. So she and I talked about that a little bit.
So I don't disagree with that. That that may be useful, but probably just to hammer through this tonight. We don't need to worry about that. But there were instances where words like HUD or BLM were used without a definition. And if they have a land use connection, they should be in the list of definitions.
Good.
Great feedback.
Okay. Um, let's see. So we were on a three dwelling unit. Were there any other comments on a three dwelling unit?
I almost commented on there that I thought that part of the difference included some standards on how accessory dwelling units can occur. But I thought for this particular instance, it'd probably be best to have that information right in the definition.
You know, the first time we discussed the the whole code revision, we talked about including in definitions, the definitions of the different land uses like residential urban, whatever. And then we, I think we backed off on that and said, that will be in that specific section. This is would be more for generic definitions. And I don't know if if we continue to elaborate on ADUs, we can go down that rabbit hole, end up rewriting the whole section in the definitions.
Well, when I said Carol was that I thought there there were some actually standards in that definition. It wasn't here. Here's a definition for uses and here's a definition for other planning words and phrases. But as I looked at it and I recall now, I said, okay, let's just call that good enough for accessory dwelling, just because I think for accessory dwelling, it's very important to have that definition. You'll see some I'll bring up later.
So like for me, part of what I had asked for the word document was for, because I I didn't want to see here's a brief explanation, here's a medium explanation, and here's the full explanation. You know, we either decide we're going to do a brief and a full, maybe not have the middle. So there's just not stuff to keep going through. And then stuff we have to worry about. Oh, I changed it here, here, here and here too. So we're going to just make sure that that all jives too.
Let me ask the question I asked earlier. Everybody's number eighteen and four comments, they can see what those are, right?
Yes.
Guys. So you can see common number four says, okay. And number eighteen. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't understand. When you look at the the code on the right, there's blue bubbles. And each of those bubbles are. I can't read what the bubble numbers in the bubble, so. I don't want. Jenny, can you answer the question? Does everybody, when we look at comment eighteen and number four, is there? Jenny, can you answer the question? Does everybody, when we look at comment 18 and number four, is everybody looking at the same page?
Well, so what I'm seeing for 18 and four between these two documents are corresponding. The, the export that I sent to each of you earlier does not match up to the bubbles. I need to send you guys a new exported report Excel spreadsheet that will match up with the bubble.
But it's pretty close.
It should be fairly close. Exactly. There were just a few comments that came in later that upset the apple cart a little bit.
Hmm.
So I'll rectify that and get you guys new reports in the morning.
Thanks.
All right. So moving on, accessory use or structure, we had item eight says accessory use or accessory structure means a use or structure respectively naturally probably should be separated into two separate definitions. Do you guys agree with that? Do you want to separate this into accessory use as one definition and accessory structure as a separate definition?
As it's worded, you can leave them in one as it's reworded. They are two, one is a structure and one is a use. So you're saying access, you make it may has to be structured. So it reads clearly accessory use means a use naturally and normally incidental to an accessory structure means a structure naturally and normally incidental to. So have you split it up like in the note, you can leave it in one.
I think there's potentially some value to splitting them apart. You know, it's, it's more about ease of finding it than anything else, even if because right now it is kind of two definitions woven into, or two things woven into the same place.
You could copy the same definition and give it two titles, just so it appears twice. So.
Pretty much.
If you wanted to make it easy to find.
Yeah.
We don't have an objection to that.
No, the overall objective is to make this easy for
some layperson like me to understand it. Yeah, I'm a layperson.
There is another question raised by the capitalization convention. This has, I gather the first word, the first letter of each word in the title is capitalized. But in actual definition, in the defined term, only the first letter of the first word is done. So that would mean accessory capitalized use, not capitalized.
Agreed.
I think that's the convention that's being used here. And other cross references elsewhere in the document to an accessory use would not be capitalized. Wasn't happening to be the beginning of the sentence. I think that's.
Yeah. And the only reason I had recommended capitalizing accessory dwelling unit the first time is because it becomes an acronym after that.
Yeah. Acronyms are capitalized too, I think, maybe a further part of the convention.
Yes.
Okay.
Because we don't have a big exception to separating those two out, two separate definitions.
Okay. So the other piece that we talked about in terms of how are we keeping notes? I wanted to draw attention to what Jen just did in that spreadsheet in the box that she basically captured what you all just said.
Thanks, Jen.
Okay.
All right. Cruising right along active construction. It looks like that was where the Carol that you had placed on the gender, gender related pronouns. I feel like that bubble might have floated from somewhere else.
It did.
It did. So, so that's okay. I'm kind of calling that a general comment anyway. And then we have comment 11, which was Larry just saying, okay. And this just came from the zoning. So there aren't, aren't any proposed edits in convey for that one.
After I started losing my comments, I got tired of saying, okay. That's only for a little while.
I did notice they dropped off at one point.
So one concern was active construction. Now, is there a time period when that work has to be undertaken? Is it two months? Is it two days? Is it two hours? You know, if you have rain or delays in materials, you might stop work for two weeks. And is that considered inactive?
I think this, I'm looking at the term Ken, and I think this really is more about what constitutes active construction. It doesn't dive into limitations on how long something can be active or how long somebody has to initiate active construction. This is just what is active construction.
Okay.
And I understand where, I understand the problem with holes and the stop and start of construction with certain projects sometimes. But that's not.
Okay.
Yeah, what this particular term's doing.
Next. Maybe it'd be helpful to know where active construction falls into the code.
What context? Places. So you must have active construction commenced within so many days, or it'll probably have that kind of use.
So the, there's a definition online that says active construction means any building structure that is under active construction and has a current building permit. Not, not that it's had stopped for rain or, you know, the workforce got mad and walked away and he's trying to find new stuff. It's active permit.
Where are you reading that from?
Oh, I just pulled it up on Google. Just bring it down. Just pull it up on Google to see. So that's the definition on Google. Is that it has a current invalid building permit is considered active. I like that.
It's also unchanged from the original. So.
Yeah.
No, I'm just saying that that's the same definition that's in here. It's just, just validating.
Let's go to the next item.
Well, are we going to change that or not?
There may be a reference somewhere that says you cannot participate in any active construction without a building permit. So you could be actively engaged in construction outside the proper permits. So active construction is building stuff.
Okay.
I do think.
Having a permit is probably a requirement. That's not part of the definition of what active construction is.
Okay.
That you have a permit for it or not, you could be engaging with it outside of a permit potentially. I just think the definition is fine the way it is.
Okay.
The requirements will be in the code elsewhere of what, when you can participate in active construction, when you have to stop active construction. Anything about active construction, if we reference it, it'll be talked about there, not in the definition.
And I have made a note to check where this is used in the code. We'll do that on all of them. But any of the ones that we're curious about will slide specifically. Sometimes I find that we go through all the definitions and then some of them have ceased to exist in the code. So we can take those out if needed. All right. Adequate erosion control measure, structure or device. This is a mouthful. Let's see. Oh, I see what I just did. Sorry, guys. I was looking at the wrong thing here for a second.
Welcome to the club.
Okay, so there was only one comment. Okay. So I think unless anyone else has thoughts on that one.
Move on to the next one.
The next one is adjacent property owner. And we do have a few comments on that one. See, here I go again, adjacent property owner three, but the comment says accessory use or accessory structure. Oh, let's see who made that comment. Carol, was that one of yours?
No.
Okay.
That was mine. It's, it's referring to a previous definition. It's not an adjacent property owner definition.
Yeah.
Well, that's what she's trying to sort out is why her columns got.
Yeah, the number three bubble is floating over adjacent property owner. So that must have floated down from like for you. Um, so seven. Seven does apply. It says, I don't disagree with change from 150 to 200 feet. But if this is a policy change, it should be highlighted differently from other changes.
Okay. And you all may recall, there was a prior director to me. And she did a lot of the foundational work with Logan Simpson on this, even this aspect of the project. So I know there's a couple of places and things that Logan Simpson did that were guidance and direction from Sally in terms of things that she had flagged or identified that should be looked at. So I'm speculating that this is actually one of those, those things that she was suggesting as a change. Exactly why? I don't have that history, but I do think that that's where that particular request to change that dimension comes from. And it may have to do with the variable size of lots within Woodland Park. As we talked about on other things, our lot size here in the older part of town is much smaller than some of the newer sections of the community. So when you're only drawing 150 foot radius around a perimeter of a property line, sometimes you don't capture the desired notice area that you would like. So that I think is potentially what, what that was, was trying to target.
Do you think maybe those distances should change for whatever application we're looking at? Maybe a zoning change would be 600 feet. And a variance that would only affect a Jason property could be 200.
I've seen the boundary split a couple of different ways in Oregon, because they're very, very strict in terms of what's in an urban growth boundary versus outside an urban growth boundary. The inside, the urban growth boundary has a smaller radius because it is much more densely developed. But once you get outside that, it is truly your larger rural kind of county setting. So there it's a much like a 500 foot radius and inside it, want to say it was like 300 feet.
So maybe the definition really shouldn't have any distance. Maybe it should be the application.
Well, no. Well. Potentially by zone district because of the lot size. You know, when you look at what is the preferred or recommended lot size in the zone district, that may be a better cue for what we want for, for a distance. I imagine that 200 foot was kind of a happy medium. You know, and it is, the more consistency we have, the easier it is for a small staff to administer. So that's the other piece to kind of keep in mind. You know, I appreciate wanting to be very specific and strategic about what we're doing depending upon the ask. But sometimes that creates far more challenges at a staff level, you know, in terms of this one's 10 days, this one's seven, this one's 14. You know, signs are this, newspapers that, you know, that, that, the little more consistency wherever we can get, that would be helpful. So I would advocate for one distance. Or potentially split apart by zoning district, I think, just because of lot size would, would be logical in my mind. But, but one distance would be possible.
I work for a community that we had distances at the discretion of the planner that was reviewing it at the time, and it could range anywhere from 150 to 1,000 feet.
You know.
Depending on the project.
I admire how they empowered staff, but I, I think that, I don't think we're quite ready for that here. I think people in this community would appreciate a firm number. What does that look like? Where does this get drawn from? Yeah, I, I, I would, I would feel more comfortable with a firm number.
Good. I'm comfortable with the new number 250.
Is it two or 250?
Two hundred fifty's crossed off.
So it's 200.
Yes. My other comment on that particular one is that it's really not an adjacent property owner. It's a vicinity property owner.
My only concern with this is if we get a final document done, we adopt a recommendation for the city council. It goes to the city council. There's a list that says, by the way, tucked in among this, there's a variety of things. There's this item, this item, this item. There's a change from 150 to 200 feet, those sorts of things. If we're going to have them in there, don't hide them. You gotta identify it. So that's just keep it highlighted, keep it identified, keep a list of this so that, you know, we're not trying to figure out at the very end, what did, what did we, what did we change on this policy change?
Yeah, there definitely needs to be very clear, yeah, bold strikeout or, or, you know, strikeout document in terms of what was added, what was, what was deleted. In fact, when Jen and I were talking yesterday, we identified a couple of terms that were, I think, that was even in the email that went to you, a couple of terms that were eliminated. So that actually does need to show in the document with the strikeout for that, that very reason that you outlined there, Lee. So the chairman, you were saying you were comfortable with 200?
Yes. Hope we keep things moving. We'll go to the next item.
That sounds good. I was just doing a quick search of where adjacent property owner shows up in your code. So I'll keep looking at that. Let's see administrative official. We have well. It was an okay. So this one did come from the mobile home park section of your original code. And if we need to, some of the mobile home park ones are very specific to the mobile home park. If we need to identify that in here, we certainly can.
You identified as the mobile home park, or excuse me. As long as we don't use the word administrative official anywhere else but the mobile home park, that would be okay.
Does that mean title 16?
Yes.
Where did administrative official definition come from?
That's what they were just saying, from the title 16, the mobile home park.
Oh, thank you. Okay.
Looks like it is only used. Like it's on that exact term is only used in title 16. So that, that'll keep it clear. Anything that's related to the mobile home park section that got rolled into the UDC would have administrative official. So.
That one may come up again though, when we finally come up with a ordinance for short-term rentals, because administrative official or the city manager may have a need to designate or delegate authority with reference to short-term rentals. It'll come up again.
Okay. Does anyone have any thoughts on that definition? Are we good?
Good.
All right. Onto page two. Oh.
Just, just as a point. So there's a definition in title 18 administrative officer slash services. And that seems to be a drop from this definition section.
Yeah, that was some of what Jen and I talked about yesterday. So when something like that did get dropped, it needs to actually show up with all strikeout. And then we were discussing what the new or more contemporary terminology is around, around that. And I don't remember where it shows up exactly, but we did, we did. The, the effective use is covered elsewhere, but we, we did flag that that needs to at least show that that's no longer the, a term that we're using.
All right. This is not my favorite section. I get a little blush when at least they say adult arcade and not some of the other terminology. But okay, so adult arcade. This, adult arcade, adult bookstore, adult cabaret, adult entertainer, adult entertainment and adult motel. None of these have comments on them. Other than the okay.
None of them changed, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were a number of more sensitive terms with very specific uses that, that you, you could tell that there was a lot of care that went into crafting those originally. So yeah, you don't see suggested revisions, you know, here by, by staff or the consultant. And then, yeah, like Jen's pointing out, it looks like you all are reasonably comfortable with a number of these two in their current formats.
So all the way from adult arcade over to the next page, adult motion picture. Are okay.
One even adult oriented business.
I guess I've muted. I guess I've muted, adult motion picture looks good, no comment. Adult oriented business.
Let me get my bookkeeper.
There was, there was one comment. Um.
That was me.
Okay. Yeah, no, this is, see, this is, these are the ones I can't say out loud, so you, you can read that. I, I, I would like personally to do away with the terminology sexually oriented business and call them adult businesses, but that, that's up to you guys.
I would agree.
I guess that's what we have proposed here anyway, so um. I think it's a little bit more.
Well, and I think that comment is actually flagging a disconnect between our definitions and the land use section of things. Versus um, I'm not sure what um, chapter four covers. Um, but in that particular chapter of the, the city regulations, it's um, um, a different term. And we can.
Yeah, so we can address that when we get to chapter four. That's the other thing I want to note is as we go through chapter four, we may condense, consolidate, or even eliminate some of the uses. Um, and I know we talked about moving a lot of these use definitions over there, so we'll have to do a little bit of some consolidation and. Um, we'll have to do another scrub through definitions once we get through the uses to make sure that we have all the appropriate definitions in the right place.
I did, the whole sexual encounter center, center for me was like, are you kidding? I, yeah, but I went back and I looked at the original thing that generated all that stuff, the original ordinance, which was, I think, twenty sixteen. Yeah, but that was the only one, not the whole sentence, it was the last one that was like, really? That was where I reacted.
Okay.
Not the whole thing.
That makes sense.
I, i- if there is a way to consolidate the consideration of adult entertainment. And not lose the policy intent. I would like to see that happen, but it, it was, it, it was a very controversial subject when it was discussed and then passed. It was very intentful to prohibit. That type of business in any zone, but, but it is permitted. It was intended to, to narrow it to as small a piece of real estate as possible.
Which you had to do legally.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, and um, yeah, the, the section's always awkward and very uncomfortable and yet just educational. Um, so unfortunately, when you're dealing with somebody or working with somebody who has an interest in developing that kind of business. It is helpful when things are this specific at the staff level. And I would say at this point, if we're just looking for consistency, um, that, you know, the fact that we're not. Making any changes to this is, I, I, I would consider helpful and supportive and, and reflective of confidence in the regulations that have been adopted around this particular use. So um. I'm not in a hurry to adjust these very much.
It's like signs.
Yeah, there's a couple of things you just don't want to touch.
All right, um, so that takes us on to agricultural and gardening sales. Um, we do have a few comments on this one, so we had, and I, I see what you're saying, there's some um, potentially some standards in here that we need to pull out. Um, one of the comments is the screened from view part could be problematic for tractor supply, Foxworth Walmart in the summer. Um, and I would agree with that. Um. Do we want to put use restrictions? So that's kind of getting at the same thing about the outdoor storage. And then a new definition agricultural use refer to zoning existing definition eighteen point oh six point oh three oh. So I would propose probably removing this last part about outdoor, outdoor storage of materials and equipment is allowed. That needs to go in our youth regulations or, or in another section, and we just need to define what the, what this establishment means. If that works for everybody.
The, the last sentence is worth a little discussion because something similar appears in many, many definitions. Where it has a prohibition on outside storage. Pro, a prohibition outside storage isn't inherent to the definition of our agricultural gardening sales.
I agree.
Um, it seems like a standard shouldn't be there. I had a little mini list of things that went through there. There's at least a dozen different places where we add the standard, something about outside storage or has to be screened for outside storage or not. Those aren't really parts of the definition. I've heard in other contexts, Karen's nodding her head, because I've, I've heard you. I, I've heard you complain about trying to put requirements like that into definitions.
Yep.
So I, I'm not saying it shouldn't, we shouldn't have it, but I suggesting we shouldn't have it here.
And I think that's a consistent theme that we're hea- hearing, you know, like I was saying, I, I brought this up before, Larry brought it up a little bit ago. Um, you're bringing it up again, so I would consider that fairly consistent um, approach in terms of what we're doing, Jen. Um, you know, and I, I can't remember what our, our proposed chapter is that covers um, what I'm used to referring it to as supplementary use standards. Um, and that's where, you know, based on a use, you've got all those other details. Um, accessory dwelling units are a great example because there's a, a number, um, you know, even within the, the text that covers accessory dwelling units, there's. There's a whole list of standards and things associated with those.
Yeah, ADU is one, particularly, you've got many paragraphs that cover that.
Yeah.
So let's put as the, the minimum that we need in the definition.
I agree.
Yep.
Okay, so that last sentence comes out. Um, Larry, did you want to? Uh, let's see, where was that comment?
Could you make a note that that needs to be verified where that might need to go back in elsewhere if it's not in the definition?
Yeah, it would, it would need to go, it would need to go in use standard, so.
Yeah.
Where in the use section, if we um, typically what I like to do is. And I think we talked about this, I think Carol might have mentioned it earlier. If we move all the use definitions into chapter four with all the other uses. What you can say is defined as, you know, agricultural gardening sales is defined as, and then you have the definition portion of this. Then you say use standards are, and then you list all the standards.
Yep.
And typically those are, you know, outdoor storage needs to be screened, parking needs to meet the parking requirement, some, some of those kinds of things. So that's where I think it needs to go, but I can make a note here. Um, there was another comment in here. But agricultural use, here.
I, I, I can read the comment that we ought to put that definition back in, it was taken out.
Okay.
Zone district called Agricultural District, so I thought, well. We, we should have that.
Farming and ranching doesn't cover that for you?
Uh, well, it certainly fits with our geography area.
But we're not defining any of the other districts or zones.
No. But I, but I can't think of any agricultural use though, in, in, in the city right now. There are some ranting, there's some. Keeping of horses, but.
Poultry.
Yeah. That's, that's, that's foul. But I'm, I'm okay with just not bringing that back in.
Okay. Okay, um, that takes us to, let me just double check. Thirty, okay, that takes us to airport, heliport and heli stop. Um, twenty-five. Who even have land available to do this, why was it added? And that, that is a really fabulous question. Um, I don't know if Karen, either Karen or I have the history on why we added this, so if it's. Well, no, I bet it, I bet it's listed in, I know, it's listed in, I can do a double check on that, but you had a few uses that were listed. Throughout your zoning or subdivision code, um, that were not defined, and so we did define them, so I'll double check on that. Is it something if it's not already in your code?
That we is something, it's in the use table, airport, heliport, heliport, the conditional in all zones, in all districts.
Are you so?
New use table?
I'm saying this, this definition was just added, is added and then put into the use table. It's added so that it could be a conditional use everywhere.
Well, you have it right now. It, under your special use permit, current chapter eighteen point six one special use permit. Under applicability, it's listed as airport, heliports and heli stop.
Unless we add more land, annex more land, we don't have land to do it on.
Yeah, so, but I don't know if you, you catch what she's saying, right now, in our current regulations. We have a section called special use permits, and there's a little list of uses in there, and one of them is. Um, that, the heli, heliports, and so we already say, if you want one of these, you need a special use permit. But we don't have a definition for it.
Okay.
So.
That makes sense.
It, backdooring it in, we need a definition, and then it sounds like in the, the proposed use table, the use is actually showing up in the use table and not.
And when we get there, remember to take it out of the residential zones. Do have one comment and with the fourth line, it says repair of helicopters, that should be aircraft. Because there is new technology coming out with vertical takeoff vehicles and uh. Just want to make sure that applies to those as well.
So you're saying strike and helicopters?
Repair, the word helicopter should be aircraft.
Yeah.
Fair point.
Um, yeah, and you just, you never know who's moving in next door that has ultralights as a hobby.
Or you just say intended for vertical landing and takeoff of aircraft and then get, cover it.
So wherever, wherever you see helicopters replaced with aircraft.
Just flat out aircraft.
Just use aircraft exclusively in the paragraph.
But later in that definition, it does talk about helicopter pads, I think you would have to leave that.
And, well, and what I'm taking away from this right now is actually that we need to potentially check um. More, even more contemporary terminology around the aviation industry when it.
You can use the acronym V style, but that's been around forever, it's just a different airplane that I'm, that they're doing it with, I mean, we have them all over the place. It's not a nice ride, I've done it.
Is there a difference between a heliport and a heli stop?
No idea.
Is that personally, I would leave it, it was, it says something like vertical takeoff and landing, and then you don't have to worry about, because aircraft people. I- if you say aircraft, people are gonna think about cessence.
It does include airports, which would be non-vertical takeoff.
Not necessarily, well, yeah, it could, but then take out, take out, take off airport, because you're not gonna have, if. I, I, that's. I'd, I'd hate to have you have a definition in here that's something that is, and you say it's permitted and it are conditionally permitted or whatever. That it could never happen. It, that seems kind of foolish. That's, that's your call, no, I've.
Well, if, if the most generic of all terms would be just aircraft. What we can get rid of, you know, quit trying to guess what the next technology is gonna be.
Shining Mountain Golf Course, a city property, right? No, the city.
No, it's private.
It's not in the city.
It's in the city.
But it's private, so if somebody private bought it and decided they want to put an airstrip in there. I'm saying it's a city and city, it's within city limits.
But it.
So if somebody bought it, decided to bulldoze the golf course, put his airstrip in, because they wanted it for their private airplane, that could be done. So we deal with it when we deal with it, but I'm just saying, the definition hasn't hurt anything.
I understand that it's sort of, that's a moot point, because with the swamp in there, that's protected land, you can't do that, so.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, somebody could.
I, I, I'm just, I, sorry, it's the aeronautical engineer in me, it's aircraft just doesn't apply to a vertical air thing, that's, that's me.
Right, but like Ken's saying, I mean, even if you're not looking at the airport because of the swamp, somebody could go out there and buy, you know. Hundreds of acres of homes, demolish them all and then decide to do this, so it's just safe for Putin to have it in there. Hoping that maybe we never need it than to have to scramble, you know, like we are with the SDR right now, because we didn't have those definitions in place before.
I think Carol's comment was right, that if we, once it's aircraft, one can define aircraft broadly and pretty, and you can cut this in half. You don't need to know what heliports, and I think Larry made the comment of heli stop, no one knows what that is.
What the hell is that?
It, it's, it's fine to have a definition, just skinny it down.
Yeah, yeah, don't, don't leave it open for interpretation.
All right.
So if you did Carol's thing, why don't you just only have the first sentence, and you don't have any of our set stuff in there? Do you want to make it short?
Well, the definition expands to support facilities for. Which is appropriate, I think.
Well, I mean, and you, you could modify it by saying, instead of airport buildings, just say aircraft buildings or aircraft facilities.
There is a definition between a heliport and a heli stop. Heli stop could be a multi-use area, like a parking lot, athletic field.
Top of.
Rest area along a highway, a golf course, it doesn't have to, it does has, has no support facilities such as fuel hangers or attendants. That's a heli stop. Heliport has sports facilities such as fueling, hangers and attendance. So.
In the time of emergency, they're going, they're gonna stop anywhere they can physically put it down.
Yeah.
Get that person out of there.
It, it, so the bottom line is we're trying to identify a generic characterization of things that fly. And their support facilities. So is aircraft encompassing enough?
Well, I'd like to let us kind of check some resources and see what we can come back with for you all, if, if that works. Yeah, let's.
We're only the alley.
Still in the A's. Um, Ally, so we had a couple of comments on this one. Uh, this is a different definition than the definition used in eighteen point oh six point oh three five. The draft definition is from seventeen and appears satisfactory, but we should recognize the change. So it appears that we had two definitions, one in your subdivision chapter of title seventeen and one in the zoning of eighteen. And uh, it appears that we, let's see, we didn't.
My question is, which do, which do you prefer? Why do we pick one over the other? Eighteen, eighteen is referring to its primary public right of way, which is used primarily. As a secondary means of access to the budding properties, or, and the one from seventeen to right of way dedicated to public use, which gives a secondary means of vehicular access. To the backs of properties otherwise budding the street and which may be used for public utility purposes. It was not used for, it's still an alley, it was not used for public utility purposes, it's still an alley, but it's not, the vehicles don't go down, it's a. I would think the title eighteen one is probably a little better.
I agree. I actually like the inclusion of utilities.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a credible use of.
That might be used title eighteen and say, which can add the reference to utilities. Because I wish vehicular access isn't central to an alley in practice, it's usually the case.
It's a right of way, and so you do have legal rights for, whether it's approved or not. Approved in the future to provide that access.
Um, in the, the, the subdivision. Definition that's here, you know, alley means a minor right of way designated for, to public use, which gives secondary means of access. Um, and I agree, I say get, yeah, get rid of the word vehicular, but yeah, secondary means of access to the back of the, or side of properties. Otherwise about industry. Which may be used for public utility purposes.
I agree, taking the word vehicular and I think that makes it an average of the two.
Okay.
To get rid of vehicular? Well, I was just saying, provide access.
But pedestrian access is a different dimensional standard than vehicle access. And if we have a series of power poles right down the middle of the alleyway, we're preventing that vehicular access from occurring, and that's a, a right of way. Uh, so I, I would like to keep the vehicular access in place.
Maybe, the definition doesn't define what the, doesn't define what it extends or scope of the alley. Maybe, the definition doesn't define what the, doesn't define what it extends or scope of the alley. Isn't that more?
There's generally a dimensional standard that shows up elsewhere in, in regulations, in terms of like street width, alley width, sidewalk width, those, those tend to show up somewhere else.
Probably in the subdivision code.
Oh, possibly, or engineering standards.
I, I've just seen a lot of conflict between an alleyway and utility poles. And, you know, to have a garage on the rear of the property, have some benefits, some design standards. And if, I'd like to maintain that vehicular access, which would then restrict where the poles could be placed in that alley.
Don't we have provision in the code, and I don't know if it's in improvements or whatever, it says all utilities have to be underground. We take the overhead stuff out, many years ago.
I believe we do, and I don't know exactly where it is, Larry, but I think it's in there, but you still have existing things.
Yeah.
So, I mean, to, to Ken's point, I can go either way, and that probably wouldn't hurt to keep vehicular in there.
Okay, better than I you.
So we're keeping vehicular?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I just wanted to repeat so that Jen was capturing it accurately.
Does this sound okay, alley means, I kind of merged the two together, alley means a public right of way, which is used primarily as a secondary means of vehicular access to the back or side of properties which may be used for utility, public utility purposes.
That seems like a decent blend of the two.
Yeah.
I think you're okay, Jen.
Okay. All right, moving on to ambulance service business. There were no comment. Apartment, no comment.
I had a comment on that. That we're talking about apartment building, drop the plural, means a building containing the room, or a group of rooms. So I, I don't think we need the S at the end of buildings, I know that's kind of picky. An apartment, its previous definition should be single, now that I look at it, apartment singular.
Yes.
Agreed. Okay.
All of your edited definitions, the rest of the page, all don't follow the capitalization convention. They all have art fairs, both words capitalized in the definition, automobile dealership, auto rental, heavy, sure, it appears lots of other places.
Yeah, and actually, this, this is another kind of pet peeve of mine, is when we repeat the word where we say apartment, and then apartment means a room. So, we might clean that up too, and just say ambulance service business dash means an establishment whether operated, and not repeat that word again. In quotations.
Oh, I see what you're talking about. I, I agree. Simplify, simplify.
Okay. I give myself a general comment here at the beginning. Okay.
I got, I got a comment on that, I'm just thinking of, if there's any potential issues with searching a document, and you have the term in a header only, and then you have the document paragraphs without that same reference to that comment, I thought would create any, make the document less friendly for searching, or you know, extracting for use or anything like that.
I don't think it does, based on how the Muni code functions on the city website, when you do search.
It always brings the header up, you won't get a content, a paragraph content without the header.
I don't think so, but we can play with that a little bit to double.
Yeah, just make sure before you extract all that throughout the document, and it make the document less.
Apartment means such and such.
I know, that, to take it.
Means a group of rooms in a building, or whatever.
I know, to just have the definition without the apartment in the paragraph, the paragraph doesn't stand on its own, it has to have the header with it now to make sense. It's, and now it's context sensitive, it has to be in the right place.
Necessary to have quotation marks.
And actually, I just, I just checked it on the, the city's website under Muni code, and just literally on the word apartment, and it does show up in both the title as well as in paragraphs, so it, it really does search the word and wherever the word shows up.
Right, so you would just get the header potentially, and not the paragraph, on a search without it in the paragraph, right, if we extract it.
Well, we, we could change it from a header and just make it part of the whole sentence, I've, I've done that quite a bit, you can just bold types the first, the defined terms, and then have the dash and the definition, so it all shows up in the same paragraph.
The word itself would be bolded, that it would show straight to the definition after that.
So if you take it out of that paragraph.
It still shows up in the header.
Right, the paragraph always will come up with the header, even if it's not in there.
Yeah, that's what it's doing.
Well, it's in there, that's why, you don't, you don't have one where it's not there to try it, and see if it's working the other way. It's in there, it shows up, if you take it out, will it show up? If there's no apartment in that paragraph.
Yes, because it's in the header.
Apartment, the paragraph. Quote apartment, quote means a group of rooms, whatever you're gonna.
I know, they just talked about taking it out of all those, so it's not repeated every paragraph.
That's why definitions are written like this.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I'm just saying, from a technical standpoint, with the. Search of the document, you want to make sure everything shows up, if it's electronic and online.
Okay.
So, we use the quoted.
I don't care if it's quoted or not, but leave the item you're defining in the sentence that's defining it.
Yes, I will agree with that.
I think that's the smarter way to do it for a document use. It adds the three words every line, but.
I don't understand why we have to have the quotation.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's, it just tie it back to the header maybe, but that doesn't do anything. Function wise, it doesn't apply. That's fine. It, it's, it's that way in every definition we've used, and the whole time we've had it, so. I don't think there's a reason to change it at this point, that.
It's not that big.
Will provide a benefit, but it might provide some, or create some problems. We're still in the A's. We just finished alley.
We're on, we're on art fairs. There was one comment on art fairs, the definition might need a new title, I assume that, I assume that vino and notes and a taste of the grape is under this, certainly not an art fair.
Okay, I, I made that, and then later, when I read the next day, you also have special events, and art fairs are listed there, so you gotta pick which one, you, you surely don't need both art fairs and special events. Because art fair is listed as one of the special events. When you look at its definition.
Yeah, and that makes sense to me, that an art fair would be a special event.
Delete.
Just put C special events.
For special events, when you go to the definition, that, that includes street fairs of any nature, flea markets, farmers markets, parades, rodeos, craft shows, car shows, wine, art, food, music, it's got them all. So you don't need a separate one for an art fair.
Does everyone use the word temporary?
No.
Special event is just an event, and it doesn't have a permanent location.
A special event is a temporary, is a temporary.
Yeah.
Says, sorry.
It's, and occurrences that are organized by one of our parties and involve more than one temporary use or temporary structure, one or more, so that's how you get, you know, like the woodland mountain artists, yeah.
Okay, I, I just put a note, look into the leading included in special event list. It would be, since it's listed in the special events, if anyone's concerned about it being defined.
The reason it was defined is because a role was added to the use table called arts fairs for allowing basically all the commercial areas to a category called T for temporary and special events. It can be, it can be consolidated into special events and drop it, use table, drop it here probably.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would, that would be simplifying the code.
Meeting those objectives.
Hang on, Jen, add to that note, cross-reference with the use table, please. Thank you.
All right, arterial street, there were no comment. Attached, no comment. Auto dealership. We have is Bad Rock Auto in city limits, it is certainly not a dealership, and then there was a second comment that said, why change name automobile sales, the auto dealership.
I like the idea that all auto things are going to start with the word auto.
Okay. Instead of automobile. Gotcha.
It's consistent.
That makes sense.
Bad rock is on the city limits.
So then, auto, do we want to change it back to auto sales?
I think dealership is fine.
I like the fact that dealership encompasses not just sales, but also repair work that often happens. Because that's one of the things that can be challenging with the current use matrix, is when those things are split apart and they're not together, and then sometimes one aspect is allowed in a zone district, but the other aspect is not, or you can't, it's, they, they kind of go together like peanut butter and jelly, you know?
Okay, then auto dealership, it is, if everyone's okay with that.
Well, I, I asked for a little clarification, it says outside storage of equipment or parts is not allowed as part of this use. Should it also specify that outdoor display for the showing of vehicles is, is okay?
Well, yeah, that was part of the reason for the question, was, was because they are sitting out there.
Yeah, you're right, and, and Bad Rock is in city limits, and they do have outside display.
And they should, they should have.
Yeah.
Cars out there.
Right.
If it's, if, if it's a regular dealership, as in a, you know, name brand, they, they'd have their cars outside.
Well, it's the equipment or parts that's not permitted, so, you know, the tire, the mountain of tires, you know, buy your snow tires here.
This is another one of those standards, that you don't want in the definition.
Agreed.
Prohibit the outside storage of equipment, which you don't want it here.
Yeah, because the, and that's, that's exactly the point, because of what, what is being sold, the automobile, the inherent nature of that is the product is on the lot, but the accessories, like wheels, roof racks.
Exactly.
Are not what's on the, the field of display.
I agree, but we've already conceded that we don't want to have standards in the definitions.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm supporting that, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool. Auto rental. There was one comment here. This definition needs to be broken into multiple sentences. It's just a long, long sentence.
But if you do what you're doing, which is getting, you know, making them simpler, not having uses, I mean, you could sure just get rid of part of it.
Okay, we can simplify. All right, and then we have auto repair heavy, again, just simplify probably, right? Okay. Oh yeah, auto repair heavy goes on to the next page, so, and then again, removing the storage of vehicle, that, that standard in there, and outdoor storage. Okay. Auto repair light, no comment, auto storage.
We have a standard there for outside storage.
Yep, I do see that, okay.
Quick question on these, when you switch to like, when we don't have the accessory, should we, et cetera, is in there, rather than just saying for the display and rental, for example, automobiles, should we say motor vehicles? Because if you're, if somebody nitpicked that a truck or a van or is not a auto. Because we're gonna make the sentence short anyway, just a question.
Say that again, so what do we want to do?
Like on auto, pick auto rental, use of any building owner for the display and rental of automobiles. And then your other part of it, it said, but may include light trucks or vans, right? So perhaps you should just say motor vehicles as opposed to.
Gotcha, okay. And then we wouldn't have to list all the, you know, in addition to, including light tractor vans and trailers, because that would be a motor vehicle, correct?
Right. And then perhaps have a definition of motor vehicle later in the laundry list.
Okay. Where was I?
So we were at auto repair light?
Auto repair light, no, no outdoor storage, I removed standard, okay, and then auto storage yard. There wasn't a comment, but I want to just read it, make sure we don't have any standards. This period of time in excess of seventy-two hours concerns me a little bit, just because it is sort of stating a standard.
I would.
You request.
Unless the definition is specific to the time, the time isn't more of just a standard requirement, that should be in the standard somewhere else. If that's not part of the definition, or you're saying, oh, it's this if it's seventy-two hours, and it's this if it's twenty-four hours.
Is that differentiating between a parking lot?
The auto storage yard to me means a tow yard.
It says, or land in which operable licensed automobiles.
So that seems like it's partly part of the definition, it's defining it as in excess of seventy-two hours. So I think it's maybe part of its definition.
Maybe that one's okay.
I think that's one of those that I'm curious where it came from. I think it was for tow yards, because there's a little bit of a conflict when you talk about people having a vehicle in their driveway for over seventy-two hours. It's not an auto storage yard, it's just a driveway. And is seventy-two hours in the use table anywhere, when, you know, we, we did have the applicant who came to move Fred's towing.
Yeah, exactly.
And I don't recall that we ever talked about how long a vehicle stays in his tow yard, although he said he had some state requirements that prohibited him from having them for a certain period of time. I guess it was fenced in too, though. I, I just wonder if that's statutory, if the seventy-two hours is statutory, because I know Fred's, Fred's representative, whoever, whomever he was, said that he had to get vehicles out of there a certain amount of time.
That does kind of ring a bell, we can do a little bit of research on that. I don't see the term auto storage yard in your current code, but I do see auto, auto salvage yard, which would be completely the opposite of this, because this is operable vehicles, and a salvage yard would be inoperable.
Fred's towing is not gonna work, because he's in the wrong zone, it's a lot of conditionally in two zones, neither of which it is.
You know, this is, this is definitely a weird term, Jen, I don't know that I've run into it phrased quite like this before.
I agree.
Your question about parking lot is relevant to what's the difference.
I bet you that came from the previous planning director with this request, because we didn't really have a fully defined, and for auto storage yard, now with the cabinet. And for auto storage yard, now with the caveat of 72 hours, would help define that.
Was there some kind of a, a storage area for? I don't know if it was the county, or it was one of the. Black Hills Energy or something, isn't there one of those?
There was.
And I just remember, in case I don't remember what it was.
Privately owned, it was an individual, and they, they still have that facility over off of 67.
Yeah.
As they came in to expand it. But it was for. Yeah, operable construction equipment. I, I'm just wondering if that 72 hour came from the statutory requirement.
Yeah, I think Jen's taken a note that we need to do some research on this, because it is, it's a weird term. I don't know that that's an industry standard, or that it's capturing what we really want it to do, so. This one needs a little attention, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it again, but, yeah.
I'd also say that wherever you used the word auto, does that include trucks and other vehicles?
Well, may go back to Val's definition of motor vehicle.
Motor vehicle.
Okay.
Could just be vehicle storage.
Or motorcycles.
Yeah.
There is a difference. You've got to, why, you can ride a motorcycle, but you can't ride a moped. Don't ask me why I know that.
It's because you supervise a lot of troops over the years, I guarantee you, that's why you know that.
All right, um, I made some notes on that one, so we'll do some more research. Oning sign, didn't have any, any notes. Bars, lounge, nightclub did have one, one comment here. Sentence too long, just a bar would not necessarily serve food, is this intended to make it mandatory? And it looks like your original definition was bars and lounges. And we changed liquor to alcohol, which makes sense, because it would encompass all, all forms. But I see what you're saying, your current, yeah, it looks like your current definition does say. Where food is available for consumption on the premises, and I, I don't think we have any statutory regulations that say that you have to have food on site. I know that we don't actually, so.
Liquor licenses require that?
I thought that there was a requirement to have some type of food.
It depends upon the, the type of liquor license.
Yeah, because you've got.
There's all kinds of.
Liquor stores that don't serve.
There's.
But it's not for onsite consumption either.
Right.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a spectrum of liquor licenses, and some include food, some don't, it's just, it's, it's.
So is that another statutory check?
Yeah, my thought on this one is, as opposed to where.
Change is to me.
Yeah, that's where I was going with that.
May have, may have, may have food available.
Yeah.
Because my favorite little Mexican place, you can take a margarita to go. And you don't have to drink it there, you don't have to eat there.
When there's a COVID. Yeah.
I watched a lady actually take it out to someone who parked in front, and I was like, this is a thing.
The other part, I, this buy the drink. I almost would just like to say for the sale or dispensing of alcohol for onsite consumption, where food may be available for consumption on the premises.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Well, you got that actually in the first sentence. Means premises used primarily.
Right.
I think it's good to clarify it, though.
Yeah, I honestly can't recall, do we have the ability to. Take a partial bottle home of wine or whatever, is that permissible in the city, I don't know.
I don't think that is under state law. But Suzanne would be, you're going to need the microphone if you want to talk, and we would love to hear from you. And the city clerk is the keeper of the liquor licensing, so, go ahead.
Colorado state law does allow you to take a half-open bottle of wine, so long as it's closed and sealed by the restaurant, so.
Does it have to be in the trunk?
No, it just has to be sealed.
The air state, you have to have it in the trunk.
No, you don't need it.
You gotta have a long arm to reach to.
Because there's bars in Colorado Springs, where you go, if like I wanted to buy a bottle of wine, they literally opened it, let it sit there, poured me like this much in it. Put the, it's back on, it's like, now you can take it out.
Okay.
It's like, all right. So buy the drink is not necessary.
Right.
Okay. Um. This is an accessory bar and lounge. Let's see, there was. Why do we have to differentiate?
Is that the difference between. A fixed structure and the potential to have, you know, vino and notes where the alcohol is sold outside of a fixed structure?
I viewed it, when I read it, I view it as the hotel that has the bar lounge restaurant attached. So the hotel's the primary use, and the, the bar lounge is the accessory.
That was what I meant by differentiate, was this, there was a list of hotel motel suite, whatever, restaurant.
So would this follow through if we had something like an Oktoberfest or?
Well, let's talk about this slightly differently, because the, what you're talking about, Sean, would be back to special events, those kind of things. With accessory uses. I don't, you could have everything in here listed as accessory, so it becomes very duplicative, especially when we have the accessory use. Defined as being secondary and supplemental to the primary use, so. We understand primary, we understand accessory, so it's a matter of when you put things in there, what's a primary, what's an accessory use?
It, it should be two different definitions. Because the first one talks about primarily for the sale of dispensing alcohol, and this one talks, like, like you said, a lounge at the. The hotel.
This is every restaurant that has a bar section over on the side.
And, but except for the, the line says, means premises used primarily for the sale or dispensing of alcohol, I mean, this is the start of the sentence on the accessory.
It's an accessory to a primary.
No, I know that, but that's not the way the first sentence reads.
Right. Val's right, I think we need to change the, change the beginning of this, if we're going to keep this definition.
That'd make more sense.
We're to the bees, I'm happy.
Let's see. Okay, uh, let's see, we have bed and breakfast, we did have a comment on that one, should this definition include the provision of a cooked meal provided by the proprietor?
Yeah, that's for me, I, for some reason, I thought that was our code's definition, is that a bed and breakfast must include a meal cooked on the premise by the proprietor, but. Maybe I recall that from somebody else's code. And should we? Because we're trying to differentiate between a bed and breakfast and a short-term rental. One of the things that we discussed with short-term rentals is that proprietor doesn't cook meals. I mean, the whole purpose of going to a short-term rental, so you can cook your own meals, I think, but a bed and breakfast would be different. Because they did cook a meal on the premise.
That's a very good point.
That definition does, it, it is what we currently have, with the exception of the elimination of the word establishment. So it's, it's not, we might have talked about it when we were doing STRs, but it's not in our current. Our current definition does not include a meal requirement.
And when you Google the definition, it does say that there's a meal provided.
I could support that, too.
And we've often, we've often added to this definition, that, that piece, that a meal is provided by the proprietor, and we've also added to these definitions. That there are no cooking facilities in the individual room.
Yeah, I like that, too.
And I'd like to remove the last part of it, that, that the number of guest rooms is not to exceed 10, we'll put that over in the use standard.
Okay.
I think that is part of the definition, the number of guest rooms, not necessarily requirement, that it would be considered a hotel if it had more than 10 rooms. And they're supposed to have bed and breakfast or something like that.
Yeah, that's in fact in definition, hotel or motel. More than 10 rooms.
Yeah, I think the 10 room is part of the definition of what a bed and breakfast would be defined as. Not that that's a requirement. I think it does define it. So it probably needs to stay.
I wonder about rewording it just a little bit, maybe something like a resident. With no more than 10.
You might say where the number of guest rooms is no more than 10.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah, okay.
And a meal is provided.
Because it does sound like a restriction rather than a definition.
I use the definition of meal provided by the proprietor, it, that's immaterial, but a meal. Is provided. And cooking facilities not available in the individual rooms. Yeah.
Those are both fair. For defining.
And that, yeah, I think that helps us down the line with defining short-term rentals.
Yep, I agree with that. Okay, bicycle trail. There was a comment, what about electric bike? This is the micro mobility, Karen.
I don't know if there's a state definition of electric bikes, because it goes.
We got to get to the.
Controversial subject, too.
No, we got to get to the Ms. For micro, was it micro mobility devices? No, you'll love that one. Okay.
So, yeah, your electric bikes, electric scooters are being kind of. They're, they pull under the umbrella term micro mobility, so that. We could say specifically electric bikes and scooters in here, or we could say micro mobility and then keep that definition later, so.
Okay.
I think we should add it in.
The, the reason for the question was because there was a statement in there about a trail or a path. It, you know, like separated from a roadway, and it made me think of the one on 67.
Yes.
That was the reason for the.
So do we decide we do want to add the electric, the micro mobility to the definition?
None of it's defined elsewhere, because they are different.
Well, we should, we should include the term, not define it.
Yeah, right.
Devices on bike trails.
Yeah.
Well, but then you've got other non-motorized.
Micro mobility is.
Wheelchairs using. Device generally. Isn't like included as a micro device?
I know, I don't remember.
Well, I don't think they.
So, so what we could say here is that, and other non-motorized means of transportation, except horses, comma, micro mobility devices. Comma, electric scooters, comma, electric bicycles, whatever, if you wanted to just add them to the exception.
Then we'd have to go change the sign on Centennial.
Centennial Trail allows e-bikes, based on the signage.
Who did that? All right, and I'm going to suggest.
A different trail than a bicycle trail, it's separate for traffic.
Jen, I'm going to suggest putting a note in there that we need to revisit this in conjunction with micro mobility.
Okay.
Okay.
And then the other thing I'm going to suggest is since it specifically says bicycle trail. I'm not sure what's coming out of the Parks Trails and Open Space Committee, as they are updating that particular master plan. And if trails nowadays are truly limited to just bicycle, or is it? Bike pedestrian, or what is, what is the more contemporary term around that, that accurately captures use of something not for, like, like cars and trucks? You know, because, is it, is it bikes, joggers, strollers?
That no electric bikes.
Skateboards, you know, or is it, is it truly just a bicycle trail, and you get a ticket if you're a pedestrian, I mean.
Well, a minibike would have been banned from those trails when I grew up, a gasoline-powered minibike. And an electric e-bike now has higher performance, farther distance, and more power than those minibikes had. So I'm sure there's somebody who's going to have an opinion on that, we may not be decided here tonight, but it should be noted that that needs to be addressed at some point.
Well, and is it, is it fair to say that it might be a matter of speed? You know, because if you're pedaling, you're only going to get 20 miles an hour, if you're running, you're only going to go 20.
Radar, radar signs like we have in town on the bike trails.
Yeah, but when you start adding electric bikes and, you know.
I know, but somebody on a bike, they can go 45, so they're a good bicyclist, so.
The bottom line is I'm advocating coordination with the Parks Trails end of things. And what does this term really need to be, and then, yeah, we definitely need to cross-reference it with micro mobility and how it's, how it's, how we want it used. Just, we need those pieces to come together, and I don't think we're going to get to that right now, because we don't have enough information. But I want to pull those pieces together.
Yeah, and by the way.
According to what you're saying. On the trails are pathway designated for news or question. Cyclists and other non-motorized uses. Various types, designs, or destinations of trails are described in Parks Trails and Open Space Master Plan, including regional trails, trail course, primitive trails. Cross-country skiing trails, the question trails, trailhead, and trail access.
So are you suggesting all those types of trails should be defined in the definition section?
No, no, I think, I.
No, I think she was agreeing more to what Karen was saying.
We need to dive in and double check.
Evolution of that, revisit that time. But again, I think it needs to be clarified.
Did, and did you catch the gist of that, Jen, was the trail needs to be included in our double check?
Yes, and you bring up a really valid point, a lot of times I think I see this, the way this definition is written as a multi-use trail rather than a bicycle trail. But, yeah, we should check with the Parks and Open Space Plan. Actually, the people who are writing that Parks and Open Space Plan sit right behind me in my office, so. See what they have to say.
Or change it to multi-use trail. And take it out.
Well, that's why I said, I'm just, we need to find out where they're going with that and get it to all cross-reference cleanly.
Maybe just put a note once we hit trail, make sure we circle back and.
Well, I told her to add that note here.
Yep.
Also trail.
Perfect.
Cool.
So one way or the other, we're going to get it.
Yeah. Okay, and we also like to look at how it's used in your code, and you do have bicycle trail, bicycle and pedestrian trails throughout the code in, in a lot of places, so. Yeah, that, that's a good one to circle back to. Um.
You have a comment from the audience?
So I'm going actually back one to the bed and breakfast, Carol. There is actually in 18.33.161. D, where it says the establishment shall provide that breakfast is included in the room rate and is available only to registered guests.
I thought so. I knew it was somewhere.
So we probably should keep that in there.
Yeah.
That's under the use standards, though, right, because you said it was 18.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is that, I mean, if that's a standard, then that's fine.
To me, it's a difference between an STR.
And a, right, right. So just, just to clarify.
I know, well, thank you, because. Carol can sleep tonight? Thinking about buying Prevagen, but I guess I don't need it now.
Okay, I just captured that, that that language is already in the use standard, so I can kind of look at the two and merge them together a bit. To make it clear, uh, let's see, we're onto bikeways on streets, and there weren't. Uh, let's see, we're onto bikeways on street and there weren't any comments.
Yeah, actually I have a comment looking at it now. I understand that's part of the current definitions in Title seventeen, but I'm doing a search on it. It doesn't sound like a definition, it sounds like how you'd like to design them as opposed to a definition. And second thing, the term is never used anywhere else in, in our, in our city code, at least based on a search. So it seems to me, it says it's not a definition by its nature and it's not used, you can save another bit of a piece of paper and delete it.
I agree.
I agree. The only place I see it is in Title seventeen bikeways and parking seventeen point oh eight point one four oh. Let's see, I'll open that actual language here.
To make it singular, is that how I lost it?
Uh-oh, there we go. Engineering specification. Oh. Well, that, yeah, that's an easy one. And it, it's defining, oh, it's a definition of engineering specifications. So we're, you're right, it's not used anywhere else in your code other than another definition, so. We might want to update that definition and then remove it here. Okay. Block front. I believe there were no comment. Borrow, there was no comment. Some materials is required on site. That even used in your code?
That would have come out of the subdivision into things. And it potentially really probably belongs in the engineering specs.
Yeah, and actually it only is in Title eighteen. Borrow and borrow and waste areas, which I agree with, I thought it would have been in the other.
Well, she's saying it's actually in the. End of things and it's.
Yeah.
Junction with grading.
Yeah, it's, it's in the soil erosion and sedimentation section.
What it meant, so that definition's kind of handy.
Helpful, yep. All right, back to our brew breweries, no brew pub, distillery pub, limited winery. We had a couple of comments on this one, consider making the three names separate definitions. I would agree with that. And then we're repeating this in section forty-four. We're repeating what is in Colorado revised statutes, I would think the reference might be enough. And repeating it here creates a case where revision is in one document might not get caught up with the other. I agree with that as well.
For the easy use of, ease of use by layperson trying to develop one of these. That'd be nice to have definition here and then as, and then reference to statute.
Like a hyperlink or something that shows.
Yeah, that would be ideal and I understand the coordination issue, but this is our document, not the state's. Somebody looking up what a brew pub is, they don't want to have to go through the state statute to find out what it is.
Just to find it right here.
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to divide this into three separate? I mean, what we can do is define one, say brew pub. Let me look in here, do we have three separate?
Different definitions in the paragraph.
We do have three separate. I think break it out in the three, because then when you're thirteen, you'll look for each individual. I like that. Okay. Buffer zone, there was no comment. Building. Sixty-four, consider deleting the portion that says a forming. And forming a construction that is safe and stable.
That was my comment, even if it's unstable, it's still a building.
Okay, does everyone agree with that? I think that's a plausible explanation. Okay.
I- is there anything that's built that's more temporary, more of a lean-to, more of a thing? It's not a building that you're adding by taking that out?
I don't think our intent is to cover it as a building or not as a building, depending.
Yeah, okay. The stable might be part of it, but.
Is a tent a building?
Well, I'm wondering about like these carports that are fabric.
Whether it's safe and stable isn't probably what you want to cover it if someone's, you're gonna allow somebody to put a.
It's not a building.
It's for a temporary event or.
Anyway, just asking the question before we change it.
Limiting that last phrase does anything, but is there other building structures which aren't buildings, a tent in particular? You know, I, I don't think you'd, I don't think you'd use that to say this is not a building because it could blow down. Or I didn't put a stake in.
So, you know, you've seen these indoor sports facilities that are inflatable buildings, right? They use air pressure to hold up the roof, it's, it's a membrane kind of structure.
That's not safe and stable.
Well, it's, it, they exist for a long time and they last like a building.
The fact there's a hole, the fact there's a hole on the compressor, or compressor line, it's still, it's still gonna be a building.
Well, could it, could you say something along the lines of it needs to be permitted?
Actually, before we dive too far down this rabbit hole. I would like Jen to check like another resource in terms of, there's, I'm sure there's better definitions of building out there. I would like to see somebody else, I would like to see somebody else's wheel and if that's what we want to use instead. Um, as opposed to really trying to massage this into something we think we want.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I was thinking the same thing, Karen, thank you. We've developed any number of definitions of building that are all. Different from this.
With the building codes too.
Exactly, I was gonna say, should the code has.
But I, I did think about changing that at this point in time.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, and oftentimes, we, we have used the building code, if you guys have a definition of building in the building code that you like. We can certainly copy that over here. We've done that before.
See.
To make sure they're consistent. Okay, well, we'll do a little bit of.
Yeah, get rid of chattel.
I know, I was gonna say, chattels is kind of like the shrubbery to me, but. Okay. Uh, let's see, we have building envelope, we did have a comment. This comment sixty-five, the last sentence. Otherwise, all areas outside the building envelope shall remain in pristine and untouched condition unless approved by the planning director. Appears to be another case of adding requirements to definitions that we may wish to reconsider. So get rid of that, okay. Oh, let's see. Building line, there was no comment. Height of building, building height of, height of building. Do we want to just change this to building height, Karen?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can, can we make this have the four corner thing, Karen?
I noticed that, too. Number of different ways to measure building heights.
I mean.
I would, I'm good with the average grade and like I said. In practicality, when we look at the average grade. We do take a number of points, you know, whether it's along a side or at the corners, we look at it a couple of different ways, so.
I'm just.
Okay with it the way.
I'm just doing it relative to. Yeah, whatever night it was, Tuesday night. And that was very explicitly stated there that it was four corners.
My brain, my memory is, I'm, I'm blocking, okay? No, I, I, I.
That's, that's the only reason was because.
Yeah, no, we, we definitely look at four corners, we look at building faces, we look at other articulations on the building. It's, we look at it a lot of different ways, you know, when, when the permit comes in the door.
I had an issue with the word finish grade. Suggested we look at existing grade. That way somebody doesn't go onto a site and modifies the site. And it mean I need a grading plan because.
Somebody does do that, that's exactly what's done all, all the time. There's, the grade is built up around the lower, the lower floor as, as necessary to reduce the. To, to raise the average base.
Yeah. And, and that building's going to be thirty feet in the air.
Okay, for whatever it's worth, I think this is actually a fairly standard definition of building height. Because I did look at a code from a prior jurisdiction I worked for and it's, you know, from like fifteen years ago, it's the same. So what were you recommending, Larry?
Instead of using the word finish grade, use existing grade. Then you don't have people coming in and modifying the site just to get that additional height.
But when people submit plans, they don't submit an existing. The finish grade is gonna be against the proposed.
Yeah, it's always finished grade.
Yeah.
I've seen it both ways.
Now, what you should do then, instead of finished grade is set it to be the, from the finished floor. Of the ba, of the lowest level or something like that, total building height. But you're still gonna be at finish, you're gonna still have a grade for the building pad wherever they set that. But it's.
That may make sense, but if it is.
So that's a total building height, but if you say from existing grade. That doesn't work because you may have to build up the grade for drainage and other reasons, to not have it in a hole.
How to define this number of different ways.
But I think finish.
We've got an existing reference, what people are familiar with, unless we have a case, is that very.
Don't worry, you'll have time to direct, to think about this one.
Well. And. In Witten Park because of the, the terrain that we run into, you know, I planted the seed previously. That is definitely more challenging and when you've got, you know, the wide open prairie of nice flat surfaces and measuring things. But, and then you've got the real estate pressures where there's the desire for people wanting nine-foot ceilings. So when you look at it in terms of where do we potentially get variances? You know, some of it does come with height variances and when you've got terrain and it makes it challenging to measure those kind of things. But that's where I was advocating for our list of more substantive changes to consider. Is increasing the building height in some of our zone districts. Not so much the single-family zones, but like the multifamily zones. I take those from thirty to thirty-five feet. But limit the structures to a maximum of three stories. So we're still dealing with things like trail ridge. But they have that ability to meet the market demand for nine-foot ceilings. And then also put the pitched roofs on there that we desire. So it was, it was food for thought at some point.
But the, the bottom line is, we want to make it so clear that there's no ambiguity for a builder. So if we change that, that's fine, but the definition needs to be consistent. Right, because if you say finished floor, well, I could have three basements that aren't finished, but we're gonna start here on this one, so. There's always gonna be somebody that's gonna read it between the lines and try to find. Come back.
Until we review it for substantive changes, I think we read it as is. Right now, it's just, if we're gonna, if we're gonna, alphabet is under B, put something under H to say where to find it. Who's gonna look for height under B?
Yeah, I think we're gonna change it to just say building height, which will help that. And, and guys, I've done a ton of research on building height. I, I have a whole memo I've written that I could send to you for contemplation on this down the road or, or whatnot with. Changes and everything you've suggested tonight has been used in other definitions of building height. So a lot of them do, there are a lot that measure from the finished floor of the building to the top of the roof. Which does not take in consideration the grade particularly. I think in Witten Park you have a lot of low-challenged sites, so you might want to consider the grade.
Let's, uh, send that out and we'll review that and.
Yeah, I'd be happy to send that out.
So that's, try to keep moving here.
We're almost through the beef. Business services. Be.
Anyway, just to comment, the building height would be different for a fire code than our definition of building height. For industrial buildings, it's the actual finished floor to the top of building for what insurance requirements, what sprinkler codes required. So it's, it's a different definition depending on what you're looking at.
Commercial versus residential?
Well, for our purposes permitted, for permitting, this is what we look at regardless of the use of the building.
All right, business services, there was a comment, not sure that electrotyping is. I'm gonna put this with the chattels and shrubbery. Um, there's just some specificity in here that probably could come out.
You can take out everything if, if, and it contract basis or something, basis and get rid of everything.
Right. I think I agree with, what, what do you guys think? Can we take out all those examples?
Sometimes examples are very helpful. But this is kind of overkill.
Did this definition come out of like nineteen fifty-two?
I don't even.
No, it would have, it would have had to have hit like the late sixties if you got electronic typewriters.
Right, electrotyping. Sorry, guys.
Doing stuff on metal. It's not an electric typewriter.
Okay.
There is a, I mean, there's a different thrust to this here, it's sort of, this is office services. As if you stop it to say on a fee and a contract basis, then Jen's office is this, a consultant. Be doing, is that what we need? Do we mean any, anybody who does work for another business? I'm not sure where to use it, what's, but clearly it's intended to be newer than that.
And, and why do we need that definition, though?
Well, that, that's another question is, does office, does office cover that, unless it's a retail office for me?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I started saying business services could refer also to consulting services, not, not all of these other more physical. Services.
Well, and again, I think when we, when we look at chapter four, the, the U standards, we're gonna wanna contemplate some of these. Because to your point, an office is an office, I mean, is it? When you're permitting, you know, when you're looking, when Karen receives an application or a building. You know, there's a difference between a retail space versus an office space. And in this particular case, a business service would be offering a service. So, you know, there's personal service, there's office, there's, there's a lot of different categories, but you have to think about. From kind of the permitting perspective, it ties to your parking regulations and, and so on. So, um, does it need to be this specific or not, I guess is what I'm saying. So we could probably keep it in for now and simplify it and then when we get to the U standards, it may get consolidated or.
Yeah, this needs to be compared back to the use allowances to see if there's.
Yep.
Some specific use for this particular lane that. And I don't think it would apply today, I think you're either gonna have a commercial business serving businesses or.
Retail.
Business serving the public, more retail or, you know, dental, law, legal services, anything like that. And I don't know what the specifics we would want to differentiate there.
Professional services later, I think.
Yeah. Retail establishment.
Okay.
But this one probably doesn't apply to its own lane today like it did fifty years. But this one probably doesn't apply to its own lane today like it did fifty years ago, twenty-five years ago.
Yeah, professional services and business services could in fact be the same thing unless there's some specific physical requirement for housing a blueprinting machine or a bookbinding machine.
I almost said that would fall under the word services, don't you? I was, I was concerned about the four words or other reproductive services.
Back to the adult arcades.
Is that in the adults?
Oh, I think we're getting to that point of maybe.
Are we getting to that point in the evening?
Okay, we got one more B, people.
Okay, let's do one more. Business unit, uh, let's see, eighty-two. There does not appear to be any comment on business unit.
We do have something coming up called condominiumized businesses.
Yes, this particular term is, is, um, not one I'm super familiar with.
The work session.
It does show up in your code quite a bit under title seventeen, dealing with town home or townhouses condominiums.
Well, yeah, I get the impression reading this thing that if you had an approved townhouse or condo, you could theoretically, I guess, could, could you take a room and sell the room? Because it says, which may be sold individually from one owner to another. Is that what this is implying? Or am I missing it?
Where are you?
On business unit.
Business unit.
Isn't, isn't that odd? I mean, it doesn't, it, it suggests you could sell a room of your condo. If I'm, I'm.
Or, or sublet it.
Well, they say sold, so.
Sold is key to that.
Says sold.
Oh, it does.
Yeah, in the very beginning talks about one or more rooms arranged, designed and used for business purposes. And then to your point, that, that gets old, which.
Well, is this, is that in fact a permitted use?
Okay.
In any sound.
Well, yeah, this, this doesn't authorize the business use in a residential area. If there is a business use of it, for some reason, there's, someone thought there's a need for a definition to say what's, what building structure, physical piece is the smallest will be you, it will be usable.
Good.
Depends where, whether it makes sense, depends where it's used.
Well, and my suggestion, and, and this is where I don't have it readily available in my head, is under state statute where we get into the real estate terminology and conveyance of real property units. There's, um, definitely condominium plots, but those, um, I don't think are a hundred percent focused on residential. It's an airspace unit that gets transferred. Some condominiums, um, uh, may be, um, commercial. So that you, it's a, it's a totally commercial building. It's all commercial uses. And you, you basically own, like, look in New York, you own an apartment in a building. Um, only it's a, it's a commercial airspace that you would own in a building.
Karen, this is another case of one. There is a definition in chapter seventeen of busy, business unit. That's copied word for word.
Uh huh.
And at least according to the search routine, it's not used anywhere else.
Yeah.
It's a confusing, so it might be ripe for potential deletion.
E- exactly. So, um, yeah, let's make that, Jen, and we'll, we'll do some research and some double checking about what's necessary and how do we, you know, how to, just how to proceed on that.
One of the things though that came to mind is we did not define mixed use in this list of definitions. And I made a recommendation to add that. And I, this kind of makes me think of, um, the woodland overlay, if, if it in fact, it permits condominiums and apartments in a couple of those lots. Maybe that's what this is referring to. Or could, could cover. Uh, but I would prefer we define mixed use as opposed to using this kind of. I, I, I can't even understand what they're envisioning.
Yeah. So, um, to both years, both of your points, uh, this particular term may need to vanish and we may need a variety of other terms to, to capture what we're talking about. To make sure, um, things, things are addressed, both mixed use and that ability to, um, individually convey commercial spaces, you know, in a, a, a commercial building, that there may be advantages to a business owner to, to own a their own level unit in a larger building. So we'll, we'll look at it from a couple of directions.
And determine too, if we want to cover vertical and horizontal use.
Mixed use.
Maybe we don't, but we don't have anything right now.
Yeah. Um, and to that point, just as an aside, uh, one of the, the tasks that I, you know, I don't know, task bombed CJ with today. It's a little free form occasionally, uh, was asking him to, uh, reach out to Beavis Vista since their South Main development comes up. A couple of different times in terms of just desirable in terms of how they've got mixed use in the residential intertwined. So, um, asking him to, to look into how they did that, if it was a PUD or if they have other development standards. So just, just a little research for, for fun.
Well, we've gotten through the Bs. Do we have a question? How long are we going to work on this? I was hoping to get through further.
Well, there's not too many C definitions, if you're feeling brave, and it's not nine thirty yet.
Shoot, shoot for crematory.
Or the end of the page or, yeah.
You gotta hit cul-de-sac.
Oh, no, cul-de-sac. She's right.
We don't want to leave our last video.
I'm, I'm, I'm good for cul-de-sac.
All right.
So don't act like you're C.
Campground. Um, we have a couple of comments here. Not sure understand where it is not the primary use of the facility. Do you mean, mean when or am I missing something?
That was me again. At the, the end of the definition, as it's written, says off-season parking of vehicles is permit, permitted and camp, campground, um, shall be allowed where it is not the primary use of the facility. So, I mean, the, like, the ones that are, campgrounds that aren't open on, on, in the winter, they get to store them. I, so I, I think there's something, i- it's, it's not clearly defined to me as that. Cause maybe in the winter it is, but in the summer it's not that. It's, it's awkward wording.
Well, that, well, I, I was thinking diamond, uh, campground where they don't have, um, human occupation during the winter, but they do allow
Right.
uh, campers or, uh, RVs to be there over the winter. And then I also had a question about transient basis because I thought that we had a, a new definition or a new permission for year-round occupation. Is that, how's that word Catherine? I can't remember what we finally came up with. In other words, people can live in a camp, at least two of the campgrounds now full-time.
Yeah, we basically left the code the way it was originally. So it's the definition is transient. There's three of them. I can never remember it, but it's, um, seasonal transient. And I can't remember what the third one is, but we, basically we went back to the original code. So however the original code is written, transient is in there. So it's a campground is you, is allowed for transient use, but we don't define what the transient use is.
So transient use could be one day.
It could be one day, it could be. Yeah.
Five thirty.
Yeah, five years.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so I, I would just say that that, the definition of campground probably needs to be in sync with our definitions now for campground use. Do you understand where I'm, where I'm going?
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, the camp, isn't the campground use also defined in the use table?
Uh, listed probably, but I don't, it shouldn't be defined in these tables.
Oh, right, right, sorry. It's getting late.
Yeah, no, it is. Um, we might not make it to cul-de-sac. So, and I understand right, but a little over a year ago before I started, that there were some updates or changes around the, the campground. Is that where this is coming from?
So we changed, we changed it and then we changed it back.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is, um, for Jen is, I'll, we'll find that ordinance, the most recent ordinance and make sure she has that. So let's leave that as the note. We'll double check what the, the current, to make sure something didn't miss, um, integration in the code.
You might even look at that last sentence as being a standard too.
That occurred to me, but yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. No, that's helpful. Thank you.
Jen, do we have any corrections on canopy sign?
Sorry about that. I was muted. I, my headphones were. No comments on canopy sign. Oh wait, no, there is, yeah, none. There is yes, no. There are no comments on canopy sign.
Yes, we have no bananas.
Okay, you're a lot quieter without your, um, earbuds in.
Okay, let me see what I can do here. Oh, you know why?
Is that better?
It's different.
Let me, let me charge up the Air, the AirPods for a little bit and we'll see.
That, you're getting better right there.
Is it getting better? Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okeydoke. Uh, canopy sign, there are no comments. Um, car wash, auto, rename auto wash, I think.
What about motor vehicle wash or is there a different difference?
Vehicle wash.
This is really nitpicky. Cause I just thought of it. It says means any building or premises. Now technically, if you wash your car in your driveway, does that make you a car wash? It says any, I, it, yeah, sorry.
Uh, you do want to differentiate, um, to a certain extent, be, my, my Eastern Plains is going to show, um, truck washes are very different and, um, that requires a different level of, um, look at them. Um, so a lot of times those are, um, the, the, the livestock trucks and the, the washout that they do on those on a regular basis.
So I, I could provide that we say primarily used for washing, which would address what Val was just saying. And then, um, we were talking earlier about motor vehicles, but does that, instead of automobiles, does that negate what you just said, Karen?
Autos, we had it defined as motor vehicles, the way there's going to include light trucks and such was.
Yeah, we've got a, later in this document, we need to define motor vehicles because if you're talking about, you're right, tractor trailer trucks or cattle cars, um, that would require a lot of.
It's a very different thing.
Drainage and water requirements, et cetera.
Potentially onsite treatment, yeah.
Does, does it address the one question about people's houses or other uses? This is used for washing automobiles on a commercial basis.
I think if we change that to say primarily used, or yeah, commercial would work too.
I like commercial.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I like primarily used on a commercial basis.
And I'll go back to the word auto too, because that is consistent with what we had earlier.
Yeah, I, I think it should be motor vehicles, but we need a definition of motor vehicles. Does that exclude the big trucks from the mine in Victor? I don't, you know? Cause we don't have a definition for.
That are within the definition of whatever we call this, um, include an exclusion for.
Eighteen-wheelers.
Yeah. Commercial, um, tractor trailer wash, yeah. And that's probably not the right word. Um, I would potentially look at like Greeley or Weld County for definitions around some of this, just because of the volume of the industry up there in terms of what is a truck wash. You know, how do they differentiate there? Some, they've, they've probably found a way to address it successfully.
Okay. I think that's, that's fair. All right, eighty-eight is a care facility and there's a, um, proposal to rename it residential care facility.
And we already have a definition for a residential care facility.
Right, it wasn't intended to rename it. It was, you got the other in there. I mean.
To possibly strike it because we've already, we already covered that.
Yeah, it's, it's under residential care facility.
Yep.
Okay.
Residents care home. We look at the building code for the definitions in there as well.
And the big, one of the big differences also with the residence care home thing, um, these get, this definition to care facility specifically says it's for elderly. There's people that are not old that are living in residential care facilities. No, but I mean, there's thirty-year-olds, forty-year-olds, I mean, so.
They got rehab.
But, but that's, that's why the other one's a better definition.
There might be a limit on number of beds or occupants as well. Based on the building code.
Okay, so we can scratch this definition and use residential care facility.
And then Jen, the note that, um, Ken's making, um, with regard to checking, um, the building code around.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I recognize under the building code, these are very different. They can be very different things based on use occupancy, yeah.
Yeah.
Residential versus institutional, yeah.
The only thing I would say. The only, yeah, the only thing I would say on that, on the, that very last sentence, if you keep care facility is and homes for the aged. Get rid of the aged.
I would agree. I like that. All right. Cemetery. And hold on, I'm saving the document here so I don't lose any of this. Let's see, we're into, we're a third of the way through the comments, by the way. We have three hundred comments, so we're at one hundred now. Um, ninety-two. It reads to me that this is required, that it requires facilities for non-earth interments be part of the cemetery.
Yeah, it says and shall include as, um.
Okay, so maybe we need to change it to, and may include.
Yeah.
We didn't define that before.
Well, actually I knew, I see why it does what it does, because at the very end it says, or combination of one or more of the above. So basically it's to include one of those to be considered a cemetery, but it, 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 I think that needs to be reworded a little bit, Jen.
Okay.
In general, it's, it's. I think the parts are there, they're just not well done at the moment.
Is it contemporary terms, Calvary for cemetery interments? It just seems a little cryptic.
I just got that a little late there. All right, um, childcare center.
But hang on, we can, we can check on that, Ken, whether it's that or cremains or, or. Yeah, we can. No, it's the, I can't even say the word. Scenery, interments.
Well, I understand, but it's not a contemporary terminology though. Well, used to.
Yeah, let's, since we're updating, well, we'll.
Where you put bones, osteary.
You never heard of a crypt coin?
Let's get to the sea.
Cul-de-sac, people focus cul-de-sac.
Childcare center, there is a comment in here, rename child or adult care center. Replace children and child with persons. This one actually needs to get updated in general, so.
And we do have an adult daycare center in our community.
Well, and this, we may need more than one term here. So that we're consistent with state terminology around our childcare facilities. And then other, other, you know, daycare facilities. May need a, a different terminology, or there may be a way that somebody has managed to mash those up a little bit, but.
I, I think it'd be fair to just split them like you're saying into maybe make a definition for adult care and childcare based on state statutes and, and what's recommended for those.
I hear you, and part of where I'm flip flopping on y'all is when you think about it from a use perspective, probably not a lot of functional difference between them. Because somebody shows up, they drop off the person who needs the care. They provide oversight, meals, activities, indoor space, outdoor space. And somebody at the end of the day comes and picks them back up.
Yeah.
So the, it's just the age group.
Overnight, no.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless it's a twenty-four hour care facility, which is a different beast.
Yep.
And maybe that's where the definition lies, just like you said, we just put in there, no overnight.
Can we make it really simple and just call it daycare center?
Quite possible. So that would put us into the D's.
All right. And yes, we have called it daycare center, in-home daycare and daycare center rather than childcare in a lot of instances. Um, we have city. Person is limiting. The, one, one thing about city is, do we define it just in the municipal code? Do we want to just reference that section?
Where is this term used currently?
Something may be required by the city.
City will approve.
City shall ensure.
Yeah, I did make a cross-reference. I just noted that in the charter, the city council's should be capitalized. Per the charter. The planning commission is not capitalized.
Oh, really? In the charter?
It's not? Yeah, check the charter. I'm sure city council is capitalized, but I think we're lowercase. As it should be.
It just seemed limiting, just to list it as city council and, and sometimes refer to as the planning commission.
Well, both, both boards or both groups have, have their fingerprints on anything that has to do with land use, but then should we add board of adjustment there? I, I, I just didn't know what.
It seems to me city ought to mean the city, and we're referring to an official of the city. Sometimes it might be the city manager or his designee. Sometimes it might be something else, but unless somebody's got something better. Think city means city.
I agree with that. Usually this definition just talks about the municipal boundary, that the city is, you know.
And there is a definition of that in the charter.
Okay.
Need to work.
Okay, civic space. Insert aquatic and cultural centers after playground facilities.
I got, I got a different question because we have this and you say such as public parks and playground facilities. And then there's playground definitions in here. There's recreation areas, recreational facilities, recreational entertainment indoor. I think we could probably get rid of this one.
There's also about fourteen different parks.
Oh, yeah.
Park and now it's broad to civic space and we're not sure what. Efficiency before, we're trying to correct and why is it better now?
Okay, so we might want to change this back to park. Which I might.
Let's just get rid of it.
Just get rid of it. Any other thoughts on that one? Are we okay to?
See where appears elsewhere and if it doesn't appear, get rid of it.
Lots of things for parks.
Exactly.
Community, mini neighborhood, schools, special use, there's nine thousand parks.
Hey. Uh, let's see, clinic, this was changed from, I believe, health service to clinic. There is, let's see, ninety-three and ninety-four. Why remove health, insert a clinic before the sentence starting may include.
It's just so to make it a sentence.
So there's a grammatical correction.
And with the addition of the include a pharmacy as an accessory use, why do you need that? When if it, if it's a clinic and they can dispense and they have their own thing and they can dispense, it's part of like the license of clinic. I mean, I don't, I don't see why we took out health in general from it, because that's specifically what it is, unless there's other healths that I missed.
Yeah, I didn't understand that either. Why, why did we delete the word health? Service, I understand, but health clinic.
Okay.
In does, do we just, do we define a pharmacy or do we need to define a pharmacy as an accessory use?
That probably avoids having to check pharmacy, which zones it's allowed, districts it's allowed in and such too.
And there's medical facilities, there's medical care facilities.
Well, I guess I questioned health clinic of, so when you say change to health clinic, Jen, you may also want to put or medical clinic. Because I think that's.
I like medical clinic better, yes.
And medical clinic is contained in it later.
And medical services for.
Right now.
That's better.
Medical clinic.
And you got one of those.
Okay. Okay, then cluster development, excuse me.
There's a lot of words for to create two different definitions and only one would be needed. And the second one has got standards put in like minimum lot area, not listing requirement for dwellings. Can't, can't we live with clustered development?
Oh, sorry, I thought you were talking medical care facilities.
It's moved on. I thought we got to the CLs.
We did cluster development, yes.
Seems to be clustered development will be satisfy all our needs.
As long as we have standards for somewhere else.
Exactly. The second, the second one adds some standards that shouldn't be in the definition anyways.
So you're saying remove the dwelling or residence section? Is that what you're proposing?
I want to flag this because I want to look at where this shows up in our regulations because this is one of those weird little rabbit holes, at least under clustered development. That's in a place you would never find it in it, in. Yeah, I would, I want to look at these two, because I.
You know, there is, there's. Discussion about clustered developments.
Yeah, no, there's other contexts that I want to double check it against.
From the use table standpoint, cluster development is allowed in any residential zone. By itself, so meaning, so you can define these standards in the use table or in the standards versus having it here, I think. But trust me on this one, because I went through this with the planning commission. I think Lee was here still. When we did the McNabb at the top of paradise.
Right.
Cluster developments are allowed in all residential zones. So it's not real difficult to find it, I don't think. That I can, but I, I just remember that being the, the case.
But a definition, a, a simple definition, which is the first one, clustered development.
Right.
Is appropriate.
Right, I totally agree. Can get rid of the second one.
Or keep the standards and move them to the standard section.
Okay.
Okay, that brings us to Collector Street, which there was no comment. Commercial warehousing and storage.
You know, the whole thing with warehousing, storage, and then using the word commercial. It, it, it's, gets as confusing as parks and recreation areas. Very confusing, so we just need to clarify. What are we talking about? Are we talking about? Units that you're rented down like self-storage? I mean, we have that, but is it one building? Is it, is it warehousing for a particular?
So warehousing and distribution is an industry standard term for a storage facility where there's receiving and shipping of items typically. More industrial storage implies, you know, all kinds of these storage units, all these other storage facilities, that's a different animal in my book, and that needs to be distinct. So warehousing distribution would be to me the proper term.
And it's crossed off here.
Yeah, if it's where you're distributing goods out of a warehouse, you know, where you have receiving, selection, picking.
You know, like an Amazon warehouse or.
Exactly, warehouse distribution center.
Yeah.
Walmart, Walmart distribution center.
If you recall, Larry, maybe you were here too Ken, that Charis wanted to put in a document distributions on their property. And then changed their minds, but that's the kind of thing I also had in mind is where, where there would be a lot of vehicle traffic moving back and forth as opposed to a, you know, a self-storage unit.
And we have professional business office storage warehouse and we have many, somewhere, many store. Many, sorry, many storage. We have this kind of warehousing, which it certainly sounds like it's the bigger deal.
Right, so.
I think warehousing and storage is one thing, warehouse and distribution is another.
Yes.
Seems like we're crossing out some words.
Well, if I was building a warehouse for an industrial deal, the, the design of it would be similar, whether it's a distribution center or just a warehouse for a manufacturing facility before they move it to their next part of their production process or another facility within the same company. It's not necessarily distribution, but the, but the facilities are basically the same. But a storage facility where you're storing stuff long-term for multiple clients or something. It could be a warehouse, but it could be a whole different form factor. Could be garages, could be small units, air-conditioned, not like these mini storage. So.
So you think.
Boat storage, you know, storage to me is long-term, multiple potential customers. Warehouse is, I'm building a warehouse for my business. I'm Walmart, I need a warehouse, I need to put it in Woodland Park, Colorado. Can I build a distribution center or my warehouse, or I got a manufacturing facility and there's a warehouse that stores our goods that we build and then ships them out to whomever.
So I, I think that the, the word distribution needs to remain in this.
I just think warehousing and distribu-, ware-, and distribution centers are similar buildings, similar uses. I don't think you're gonna have a problem where you need to distinguish those, but when you say a storage facility, that.
Yeah.
That's a different animal.
And commercial adds very little. It's hard to picture this facility, warehousing and distribution, it's not commercial and you'll never look for it on your seat. So it should be.
Oh, no, you know, it would be warehousing and distribution. Anyway, that's what, but a bunch of my projects are warehouses, distribution centers. So.
Ken's writing, writing back the way it was before it got corrected.
Yeah. There is definitely a industry warehouse and distribution centers being, you know, builders that specialize in them all that.
And shouldn't you remove the word storage? Is it really storage? I mean, warehousing and distribution.
That's sort of implied. The storage doesn't need to be there in my book. That's a different, that, that opens up a whole different realm of things.
Storage is, storage is part of this explanation anyways. It's one of the things that's, it's covered in the actual terminology.
I don't think it needs to be part of the title.
Yeah, and Jen, Jen's made that note. I'm watching her type here that, yeah, she says change back to warehousing and distribution. So she's heard you all out.
He thought I, he thought I fell asleep over here.
She was typing furiously.
All right, um. Cool, so we'll change that one to warehousing and distribution. It looks like commission did not have a comment.
Is it necessary?
I was gonna say, when do we get referred to as the commission?
Right.
I've never even heard that term used.
Once in a while.
Need T-shirts.
It potentially happens when they say the planning commission said blah, 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 and then it can refer to you again in the shortened version as the commission, so just saying.
That's fine, I, I don't care.
Okay, do you want to keep it in then, just as a?
If you're gonna keep in the word, a, a definition for city, probably ought to.
There you go.
Code, that's what we were doing, right?
Comprehensive plan did not have any comments either. Conditional use permit. Like there was a comment, yes, there was a comment up here, reword. City council imposed conditions to city council imposed, or conditions imposed by the city council. So basically just some rewording in there.
We wanted to find a CUP.
Actually, in perenns after the, it was just the title, conditional use permit, kind of like you did ADUs.
Good catch, thank you.
This name should probably retain because it's a traditional name for what we're talking about.
Well, conditionally used permit, right?
Yeah, it's often called a CUP. The, the problem comes when we're gonna talk about conditionally permitted use permit. It's something different with an administrative process and. It has to be fixed.
We talked about that.
Yeah, I, I, I concur. All right, um. We're getting there, we're getting there condominium.
When you scroll the page, we'd see cul-de-sac, it's still not.
Should this land use in townhomes be included in the table of allowed uses? So condominium to me is not necessarily a use type. It's a, a function of how the, it's still a structure, right? And it's, it's still either a townhome or, or whatnot. It's hard to explain it nine o'clock. It's hard to explain it nine o'clock, nine thirty. Yeah, townhomes are different from condominiums, but it's a, it's a, a function of the ownership. Structure rather than the actual building structure.
Not correct. Building code stipulates townhomes from the ground to the roof is one unit. Fire separations condominiums can be a stack of boxes, one above the other and as well as next to each other.
Well, without this definition, I would not know what a condominium was. It's got to be there.
Well, and what I want to. What I want to say is from the perspective of planning and land use. This really drills into the, the plats and the, the instruments used to convey land. So that's one of the places I'm concerned about what this looks like. And you know, the way I always explain, like I said, like I did earlier, condominium is an airspace unit. Where you typically have general ownership interest in or in, in common, the common land. There's a, there's a general ownership interest as opposed to in a townhome plot, a lot of times, yes, you've got your. Aerospace unit that's attached to the ground and then you.
Front and back.
A limited ownership element, you know, where you've got, you know, your own little piece of turf in addition to some other general ownership elements.
You just answered the question, there should be two definitions. I mean, one you're talking about, like you said. Something that looks like a patio. Root and another one is a conveyance of ownership.
And I would disagree with this statement that townhomes shall also be defined as condominiums for purpose of allowable land use.
That's, yeah, no, yeah, I think we're, we're in the same place here, Jen.
Okay.
Yeah, based on, you know, Larry's recommendation for two definitions.
I mean, the existing code has townhomes, separate definition, condominium, separate definition. Defining, so you can see what the difference is.
Yeah.
How we list it in the use table.
But, but, but there's a psychic, there's people's minds when they think condos. They don't think of the ownership structure.
I mean, townhome is defined.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe two definitions to try to clarify.
Guess the last sentence I don't disagree with, but is it really necessary? We're cut, where the condominiumized businesses are permitted, they should only, only for the uses allowed in the specific zone, isn't that?
Well, duh.
I think that was.
I agree.
And townhouses covered well, because there's townhouse, hometown house, townhouse building, townhouse lot, townhouse tract. And this thing, so we got lots of chances.
Kind of looks like the red edition, the last two sentences in the definition can be stricken.
Well, if you, if you go to title seventeen thirty-two dot zero two zero, it does townhome and condominium subdivision shall be treated the same. As any other subdivision except that townhome and condominium final plats shall be processed administratively. So I think that's, I think that's where you were trying to say that one in the same in certain cases, is that where you were getting that from?
Probably currently, yeah, okay.
But it is, it doesn't add to the.
Doesn't add to the definition though, right?
Hey Catherine, you just used the word townhome instead of townhouses.
Well, that's how it's written.
Yeah. It's confusing.
It's, what's the proper term, Ken?
It's townhouse.
Oh, townhouse.
And do we also define duplexes or quadplexes?
Oh, dwellings.
There's structure, there's dwellings, one unit, dwellings two, there's a big section of that.
Yeah, we do, we do not want to get to the D's tonight, just. At least all the DW's.
All right, so we'll remove these last couple of sentences in condominium. Condominium, condominiumized business.
Business condominiums or commercial condominiums?
Well, it looks like we need to remove some standards.
Yeah.
I don't understand why you need the definition.
This is, this is not a common term that I see in codes, I will say that.
Yeah, I've never seen that before. Development in a commercial zone, it can use it for the uses that you expected to use it, whether it's. Rendering services to other business establishments on a contractor fee basis. Or if it fits the rules, I suppose it could be retail and it's the second floor, someone wants to walk up to that or.
To what is mixed use.
Yeah.
So with this.
This could be all business use too, actually technically. Could be all business or could be some of the business. Defining the ownership.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha. But does it have to be called condo?
Business condominiums.
Yeah. Yes.
But of course.
Well, the distinction is the land ownership and the building ownership.
Condo, you're still only going to have whatever the condo, the, a condo can have, but you don't own the building.
A condo could be three, three stores next to each other that are in one building. It's a condominium organization. And if it's on Main Street, they could probably sell retail.
Yeah, and doesn't this kind of tie back to that whole business unit discussion?
Yep.
Where it says portion of a townhome or condominium, which may be sold individually for one. From one owner to another, aren't they kind of similar?
Well, and that's where we're, we're, we're struggling is use versus. Mechanism for transferring real property.
And also for taxation.
Yeah.
There's a zoning code, there's a subdivision.
But I, I just wondered what was, I hate to say this, I didn't check to see if that was covered in our code now. Is it?
This term is not used in your code at all right now. Condominiumized.
Let's see, if we find someplace, we're drafting some usage issue with someone, someone comes up with the need for it, we can. I'm sure Jen can find it in the, among the deleted items. If it's not needed.
Okay. Gone. A conservation trust fund. There was one. This is a directive, not a definition.
That's true.
Well, we need to look at what the CRS citation is, if there's a definition for that.
And it's only referenced once in your code, it's within the subdivision section, which makes sense that. It's in a section. Let me pull up in the exact language here.
Seventeen point oh eight point one hundred.
Yeah, so it's any monies received from the state pursuant to section. Twenty-eight dash twenty-one dash one oh one, the Colorado revised statute, they'll be deposited in a conservation trust fund. And then there's more language beyond that.
It's not, it, it may make, it may make sense in our development provisions to say something about this, but it's not a defined term. And if it were, it'd only be used in this one sentence anyways.
Agreed, I think it could go away.
This potentially deals with grants and funding related to parks is my guess. Is, is how that ties it.
Like the surety bond or something like that?
No, like GOCO grants, conservation trust grants that to, to per part park and recreation development.
Does it have any connection to individuals who designate?
Land for conservation? I don't know, but, but I want to double, we need to double check that, but that's. I think, yeah, we need to double check that. Okay. Let's, let's just flag that for.
The convention for, for definition as we've used throughout the document is not the same.
That's right, it might be necessary, but it wouldn't be in this section.
Not, probably not.
Yeah, and actually, when I, when I looked up that seventeen point oh eight point one hundred, that is, it's, it's the definition and it doesn't show up anywhere else. It only shows up in the definition.
Oh, okay, delete.
So, yeah, I think we can delete it. Should we just go ahead and delete then?
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
All right, we're on to our last page. Contractor and construction services. Strike or repair and appliance repair does not fit in the definition. And suggest we should be sure there will not be undue hardship on current folks with the fence outside storage wording. Which, again, we just removed that and put it in the standard.
Yeah, we're taking out the fence things, right?
Yep.
No, she's, she's. There's a number of standards in there. Square footage and yeah, fencing and yeah.
I bet we could find, we could create in the use section, a nice little section talking about for businesses. Businesses aren't allowed to store stuff outside except the following, and then those following have to have screened, whatever, and so, you know.
Yeah.
Yep, that's a good idea.
Convenience store. Revised second non-sentence to read. A convenience store may offer the sale, for sale motor fuel or vehicle lubricants, but may not provide automotive, motive repair services.
Oh, that's probably making it a sentence.
Yeah.
I probably come, go to. Any of our convenience stores in our town, twenty or thirty. And you could find a. A little oil on the shelf. Strike it.
Okay, so strike that last part.
Yep.
May or may not include the sale of motor fuels, yeah.
You need to have the on or off site consumption thing in there either. I mean, somebody could pick up a candy bar and eat it on the side or. Nah, it's like, I'm not sure we needed to find that.
Okay, I, I want to double check where you want to strike that because convenience stores sometimes come with fuel sales, sometimes without.
Right.
Well, there's fuel and then there's the other like oil, which will rush or fluid, which. Those are miscellaneous, it's the fuel sales that definitely impacts traffic and site circulation and. It's actually, I think, more rare that you find a convenience store without the fuel sales. So do we want to just assume that fuel sales are part of convenience stores or leave? Leave it may or may not include fuel sales, but drop the rest of that sentence.
I, I know there's convenience stores, seven eleven chain, for instance, some of them have fuel, some of them don't in Colorado Springs.
Which is the point I'm making, so.
Yeah, what, I, why don't you just leave it say that the may or may not and.
Yeah.
The key, then the key part, well, let's leave it, does that automobile repair or service? That's not, that's not a convenience one.
But it doesn't need to be said.
Pardon?
It doesn't need to be said as part of the convenience store definition. Yeah, ju- just, just do the also may or may not include the sale of motor fuels and stop.
But we're suggesting leave in the sentence, the prohibition on automotive repair servicing.
But that's what I said, stop.
Different use altogether.
Yeah. The rest of the sentence get rid of.
Okay.
Well, after fuel, take out the and or vehicle lubricants and also take out, but not to include automotive repair service facilities.
Yeah.
Yes.
Strike all of that, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we've got, yeah, we've got.
And, and I don't know if you need the such as salads.
Yeah, I, I've taken that or noted that for strike, to strike as well. Okay, crematory, there were no comments and cul-de-sac, there were no comments.
Alrighty.
And it's nine thirty-five.
And we're about halfway through the comments, yeah. There you go.
Yeah, it's true.
So I guess we'll conclude our discussion of the.
First half.
First half the code, yes. We have a gentleman's care.
Do I have anything? We are, and we're going to have a very full agenda. And then, yeah, we meet again on the, the twenty-third for another work session. I will be remote for that work session, but Jen will be here on site. So we'll make sure you have staff or support in the room and CJ or Dave will, will definitely be around. And I'll be there virtually, just, you know, just virtually. But, yeah, busy, busy couple of months coming up, that's for sure.
Wooden station, who the council?
Oh. Next Thursday is first reading of the overlay zone change at city council. And the other text amendment that you all recommended to not support. They've opted to withdraw that for now and are doing a little bit of regrouping. So I don't know at what point that comes back or what that looks like.
Well, we collectively agreed that the current overlay does allow. For some types of residences to be built. And it appeared they wanted to add single family residences to that permission and we said no.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yep.
All right, well, any other comments on the permission, questions?
Thank you all for your time and work on this. Any other thoughts on conveyor now that you've seen how this is potentially helpful in our meeting, even though it's like maybe not making you happy doing your homework? Well. She said.
All right, it's nine thirty-seven, meetings are turned.